I would advise that the town board, the warrant has been properly served. Since the warrant was printed in the advisory committee report which would have the progress, I would add a clean motion to discuss with the formal reading of the warrant. The move is seconded, moved seconded all the favors as any high, all the opposed, voted third against, and voted down. Would the Assistant Moderator, the following teller please stand and be sworn by the town board?
The following teller is this morning, Christopher Raji, Tom Sepritz, Ron Morrison, Heather St. Silsco, Jack N. King, Tom George Kelly, Susan Frankel, Richard Travers, and Kelly Goodenbaum. Do you raise your hand? Do you sound aware to uphold position to which you've been appointed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize our state, our representative, Mr. Cannon, who has raised his ass to the present, Jim. I'd ask the chairman of the board to introduce the selectmen board members as the town administrator.
Thank you, moderator. And thank you all for your attendance this evening. I would like to recognize and introduce the view who made our decision to vote elect the Bullock Selectmen, Shannon, and Tyler, and John, Rick Harvey, Richard Harvey, and the town administration.
I'd ask the chairman of the advisory committee to introduce the board members.
Thank you, moderator. And thank you all for your attendance this evening. I'm Marcinia, Chairman of the Advisory Committee. I'll see you tomorrow night, all the advisory committee members. Ann and Ann Mallon, Laura Fern, Karen Mallon, Susan David, Frank Jeff, Bob Nelson, and my wife. Thank you.
I'd ask the chairman of the school community to introduce the board members.
Good evening. I'm Ray O, Chairman of the School Community, and with me on our colleagues, Bill Johnston, Mike Wong, Richiever, and Mike Hayes.
I appreciate that you could give those three boards a good round of applause. They've worked hard all year to head this right forward. I ask for a moment of silence again in the board of following town officials employees who passed since their last meeting. John, already known to most of us as Jack Toddway, like the former, Gene Martin, Ross Jenkins, and, uh, where do you like? Maybe from all sides. Thank you. Now for discussion of the rules. My name is Richard Paul, and I am the town moderator. The moderator chairs the meeting and decides to fight for the board and not vote on articles. Please let me take a couple of minutes to tell you how our meeting works. Town meeting is a gathering of the town voters convened in this hall as a legislature to deliberate upon matters set out in the warrant. The warrant is that document that serves as an agenda list for this meeting and can be found in the advisory board folder. The individual agenda items are known as warrant articles. In order to consider those warrant articles, we assemble here as brothers and sisters, each with an equal voice on a level playing regardless of our age, office, or position or title. This is not a part of the law.
The Situate Town Meeting being more ancient than our country's political parties is a place where each citizen legislator acts and is presumed to act solely in the service of our town's best interest. These have been our custom since 1636. In addition to these venerable traditions, the laws of the Commonwealth, the Town Charter, and the Town Bylaws, and the reference book Town Meeting Time, these documents and my rulings set out the rules of the road for the conduct of this meeting. For your information, specific rules to be mindful of during the course of this meeting are as follows. All non-voters and children, well, children aren't voters, are they? We hope not. Kathy, have you been letting any of them through? No? Okay, good. Okay, all non-voters must sit in the non-voters section up over here. I've made an exception for the press because I had a complaint from, uh, this lady here from the Boston Globe who said she couldn't hear us anymore. That could have been a good thing or a bad thing, but she, I moved her so that she could hear our deliberations more closely. So I'm letting the press sit in the audience. So if you're a registered, if you're not a registered voter, kindly remove yourself to the non-voters section. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, if a non-voter wishes to address the meeting, it is customary for a voter to sponsor that non-voter at a microphone, and such person having been sponsored, I will ask for the consent of the meeting to allow the non-voter to speak. Persons wishing to address the meeting must, and I emphasize must, each time rising to speak, identify themselves to the meeting by name and address. I don't do this for laughs, although I think one or two people in the past have thought I tortured them by asking them each time who they were and where they lived. No, this is a traditional courtesy which shows respect to those present and is an aid both to posterity, which might be curious about your remarks, and to those persons charged with keeping records of our doings here tonight. In other words, Kathy, it helps her if you say who you are. Further, speakers representing a board, community group, or client should state this relationship to the meeting. After making a motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to 10 minutes for a presentation. However, sponsors of resolutions will be allowed five minutes. Sponsors need not use the full allotment of time, and at this time, I remind you that town meeting has always respected the proverb, "Brevity is the soul of wit." All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has a second. Members are encouraged to speak from the center microphone, that's that one right there. I will attempt to recognize any member in the order that such persons arrive at the various microphones, but it does make it easier if you line up there. Only after being recognized by the moderator may a member address the meeting. Shouting out from the floor or speaking without recognition are not customary, show disrespect to your fellow voters, and will not be allowed. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion on an article and three minutes on the second round. A speaker from the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until those persons who have not yet had the opportunity to speak get their turn. Speakers kindly confine your remarks to the motion that is on the floor. Please address only matters of general interest. Do not indulge in personal discussion or in any way attack the motives of a meeting member. You may ask questions of any official through the moderator. Be advised that an official may choose not to respond or may respond in a way that you find unsatisfactory. Neither moderator nor meeting has the power to compel an answer, in which case your only recourse is to draw your own conclusions about the quality of the response and to vote accordingly. Should you tire of a debate, you may choose to suffer in silence, or you may offer the following motion, "I move the question." People love that motion. Please remember this very important procedural point, you may not make a motion to move the question after making a speech. That's not quite fair. So, please, if you want to move the question, save your speech for your wife, for your dog, or other family members, and just make the motion, "I move the question." A point of order relates only to questions of procedure and is not a mechanism for reviving an article or prolonging debate. There are no points of information. A question about an article should be raised only during the debate on that article. On voice votes, I listen to hear whether the motion passes or fails. If you question my call, don't worry, I'm not offended, just rise. If seven or more members rise, I will ask a teller to take accounted vote. The tellers will count only those in the bleachers or the floor sections. Persons standing away from the seating will not be counted. Section 20,150 subsection G of the Town Bylaws allows the moderator to declare a two-thirds vote. If the moderator's declaration is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, in other words, if seven or more stand, we will take account. As you have figured out by now, the acoustics in this room are bad. Anyone having trouble hearing may move to another section. There are still plenty of seats up front. You're welcome to them. Please silence your cell phones. At this point, it's my understanding that there are some honorary resolutions, and so I'm going to ask Representative Cantwell to come forward.
You want to? Okay, go ahead then. Thank you for coming this evening. There's a couple of things I'd like to address. First of all, if you haven't noticed, the annual report is dedicated to our good friend, Joe Norton. Secondly, I'd like to say, this is really an honor to be standing up here to be reading this resolution. We've prepared for Joe. If you just give us a couple of minutes, we're each going to take a turn at reading it. It starts out by saying, "Whereas the Board of Selectmen and the participants of this 2013 Annual Town Meeting would like to publicly recognize and honor Joseph P. Norton for 30 years of outstanding service as a selectman and for his strong commitment to the residents of the town of Situate. And whereas Joe first became a selectman in 1983, at which time he served with Andy Zalonis, Rich Bowen, Constantine Constantinus, and Ellie Seaton. He served as the board's chairman in 1985, 1989, 1994, 1997, 2002, 2003, 2009, and during this 2013, 2012, 2013 term."
And, "Whereas Joe played key roles in many other projects. We know he was most particularly proud of Widow's Walk Golf Course, the town's purchase of Young's Boatyard, and the Pier 44 property, and the benefits these acquisitions will afford Situus residents for generations to come. His unfailing commitment to work one-on-one with residents to solve their individual concerns has been consistent and successful, and..." Whereas, Joe has handled his many official duties, including emceeing countless special occasions with great warmth and wit. One of the things he has most enjoyed as a selectman has been the opportunity to interact with and honor Situate's young residents and their parents at Eagle Scout ceremonies, the Course Foundations, Lose the Training Wheels Bike Camp, calls from the North Pole, and, interestingly, the Santa Stroll, and...
Therefore, be it resolved that Joe accept this resolution with the resounding thanks and appreciation of the Board of Selectmen and the entire town of Situate. Joe, for your long tenure as a member of the Board of Selectmen, has benefited our community in countless ways and will continue to do so for many, many years. We sincerely wish you the best as you enjoy more time with your family, friends, attend Red Sox and B.C. Eagle games, golf, relax with a book at Peggy D. Beach. The town of Situate is a better place for your considerable efforts. Thank you so much. Signed this ninth day of April, 2013, by John F. Danahue, myself, Sean Harris, Rick W. Murray, and Anthony Vignani. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Can I do one more thing before I speak?
Yeah, Jim.
Jim Cantwell.
Joe, this is such a tremendous historic occasion for all of us to be here and recognize your service. By the way, think of all the historic occasions that Joe has attended. Just one, Joe. You and I were there, as you recall, for the 375th anniversary of First Parish Church right here in town. And Reverend Story was talking about how difficult those first parishioners, how when they came in, how they could be driving snow, coming into the building during the sermons, how cold it would be, they had to bring huge blankets, they'd have to have little fires here in front of them just to stay warm. I turned to Joe saying, "That sounded pretty tough." And Joe said, "Hey, I was a selectman then. Really wasn't that bad." But Joe, over the real 30 years, you have done so much to represent this town with great honor and to help so many people. It's my great pleasure to be here and also to recognize your family who has lent you to these tremendous efforts for Ann, Joby, Norton News here, Kim Peters, Patrick, and Therese. And I had to notice, for Patrick, who you and I just were saying, Patrick was 15, you and I met when I was 13, and you broke me into work with Bill Golden so many years ago. So thank you for your lessons to me through public service. So on behalf of the Commonwealth, it's my great honor to be here. Just have one quick thing to read and then a presentation. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Joseph Norton in recognition of your 30 years of dedicated public service making a tremendous difference in the lives of countless citizens. Joe, the article we're going to give to you right here now starts off where it discusses, Patrick Ronan wrote it here, but if you'd come right up, I have this presentation for you. This is an article that discusses of Joe with his tremendous service, and it began, Joe, because we were talking, as many, everyone here knows, when you had that unfortunate health crisis, and the first thing that we talked about, how it was like, "It's a wonderful life," the ending of that movie, because so many people said, "Joe made such a tremendous difference in my life. What can I do to help him?" Joe, in that movie, it says that, and we know the end of it, it says, "He who has friends is the wealthiest person." Here's to Joe Norton, the richest man in town. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I will say very few words. Jim Cantwell touched on it. I would not have been able to do what I think I tried to do over the past 30 years without the cooperation of my family, my wife Ann, my son Joby, my daughter Kimberly, grandchildren Patrick and Therese, and Peter and Tessa Norton, who are a little too young to be here tonight. But without their allowing me to give my time, it wouldn't have been possible. Also, I should be thanking you, the residents and citizens of Situate, for giving me the opportunity to serve you. I appreciate that more than you'll ever, ever know. We have gone through 30 years. I hope Situate is a better place today than it was 30 years ago. We have our challenges, we have our issues, we've had those in the past, and we've dealt with them and worked together to solve them, and I have every confidence that we will work together and solve issues of today. So again, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very, very much for the opportunity of serving you here in Situate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any reports of committees to be offered at this time? No? Okay. In that case, I declare the Annual Town Meeting an adjournment until the conclusion of the Special Town Meeting. I hereby convene the Special Town Meeting within the annual, subject to all the rules that were read earlier. We begin with Article 1 of the Special Town Meeting. Thought you were going to get a rest, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 1 deals with the special election cost for the United States Senator election. Moved the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $15,400, for the purpose of paying for the special election for the United States Senator.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion, Mr. Norton.
As you know, there's a primary election coming up at the end of this month for the position of U.S. Senator. We will be reimbursed for most of those costs, but we have to come up with some money up front to pay for the initial cost, so that's what this is.
For the advisory committee chairman, Sandham.
As Joe mentioned, we are combining the two elections. It's going to, some efficiencies are going to be obtained, so a small amount of savings. I think it'll work well for everybody from a convenience standpoint as well. The committee recommends approval of the motion unanimously.
Discussion from the floor, there being no one standing at the mics, this requires majority vote, all who are in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so vote and declare unanimous. Article 2 on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 2 deals with public safety overtime costs. I moved that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $100,000, for the purpose of paying for the special election for the United States Senator.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. These costs primarily are due to firefighters being out sick, injured on duty, some injured not on duty. Overtime must be paid to cover these positions, and in the police department, we had a similar situation where officer was out for an extended period of time and it was necessary to bring in officers to cover that shift.
From the advisory committee chairman, Sandham.
In addition to some of the fire expenses, you'll see itemized there, some of the costs there on a fiscal year basis. There were also some police department expenses due to some long-term disabilities, et cetera. So it was a combination of both services, both public safety departments, excuse me. The committee recommends approval of the motion unanimously.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires majority vote, all who are in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so vote and declare unanimous. Article 3 on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 3 deals with school security, school security measures, and I move... Excuse me? I moved the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $245,000, for the purpose of completing security measures in the Situate Public Schools pursuant to Article 3B of the 2011 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, Chairman Norton.
This was part of a three-year plan initiated a couple of years ago. Because of the tragic incidents in Connecticut and other parts of the country, both the school committee and the town administrator and Board of Selectmen felt strongly that this should be moved up and funded immediately. Thank you.
From the advisory committee chairman, Sandham.
As you'll see in the final paragraph, as a result of the additional 243 recommended, that's going to be funded from free cash, the additional 150 in FY14, for a total cost of $695,000. The schedule has reduced the overall costs, which has ultimately led to a savings for the town of $353,000. The committee recommends approval of this motion unanimously.
From the school department superintendent, McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John McCarthy, Superintendent of Schools. This is a project that we had to accelerate because of the tragic events that took place in Connecticut. What we have right now are some of the most secure buildings that certainly Situate has seen and certainly in the area. Our schools are very secure. We have, they're all locked, we have controlled access, we have cameras throughout our buildings, and we will be placing cameras on the outside as well. So again, thank you very much for supporting these articles because they are helping to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote, all who are in favor signify by saying aye. All who are opposed, so vote and declare unanimous. Article 4 on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Article 4, this is an equipment acquisition for Widow's Walk Golf Course. I moved that the town transfer from golf retained earnings, the sum of $35,000, into golf capital outlay for the purpose of acquiring a mower for Widow's Walk Golf Course.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Discussion, Chairman Norton.
Yes, this is one of the very few capital outlays we've had to expend money for at Widow's Walk. This is a particular type of mower that is needed early in the year to fund, to cut the grass on the greens in particular, so it's a unique mower, and we felt that it was important, we do buy it.
From the advisory committee chairman, Sandham.
Typically, expenses such as this would be paid through from retained earnings within the, within the program, and this one, because of the urgency and the need for it at this point in the season, decided to move this up a little bit ahead of schedule. The advisory committee recommends approval of this motion.
Discussion, member at the center, mic.
I have a question.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Sorry. My name is Debbie Young. I live at 17 Maple Avenue in Situate.
Ms. Young, go ahead.
I have a question. How much in funds is in the retained earnings for the golf course?
On the question...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, ma'am? I'm sorry, I didn't quite get it.
How much is there in retained earnings in the golf course account?
Currently, the retained earnings on the account is $83,339.
Mark, could you give that again, please?
$83,339.
Okay, thank you.
There were also some police department expenses due to some long-term disabilities, et cetera. So it was a combination of both services, both public safety departments, excuse me. The committee recommends approval of the motion unanimously.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires majority vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so vote and declare unanimously. Article Three on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Three deals with school security, school security measures, and I move... Excuse me? I move that the town transfer from free cash to some of two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars for the purpose of completing security measures in the Situate Public Schools pursuant to Article Three-B of the 2011 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, Chairman Norton.
This was part of a three-year plan initiated a couple of years ago. Because of the tragic incidents in Connecticut and other parts of the country, both the school committee and the town administrator, Board of Selectmen, felt strongly that this should be moved up and funded immediately. Thank you.
From the advisory committee chairman, Sanden.
As you'll see in the final paragraph, as a result of the additional two-hundred-and-forty-three recommended, that's going to be funded from free cash, the additional one-hundred-and-fifty in FY-14, for a total cost of six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand. The schedule has reduced the overall costs, which has ultimately led to a savings for the town of three-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand. The committee recommends approval of this motion unanimously.
From the school department superintendent McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John McCarthy, Superintendent of Schools. This is a project that we had to accelerate because of the tragic events that took place in Connecticut. What we have right now are some of the most secure buildings that certainly Situate has seen, and certainly in the area. Our schools are very secure. We have, they're all locked, we have controlled access, we have cameras throughout our buildings, and we will be placing cameras on the outside as well. So again, thank you very much for supporting these articles, because they are helping to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so vote and declare unanimously. Article Four on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Article Four, this is an equipment acquisition for Widow's Walk Golf Course. I move that the town transfer from golf retained earnings of some of thirty-five-thousand dollars into golf capital outlay for the purpose of acquiring a mower for Widow's Walk Golf Course.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Discussion, Chairman Norton.
Yes, this is one of the very few capital outlays we've had to expend money for at Widow's Walk. This is a particular type of mower that is needed early in the year to fund, to cut the grass on the greens in particular. So it's a unique mower, and we felt that it was important, we do buy it.
From the advisory committee chairman, Sanden.
Typically, expenses such as this would be paid through from retained earnings within the program. And this one, because of the urgency and the need for it at this point in the season, decided to move this up a little bit ahead of schedule. The advisory committee recommends approval of this motion.
Discussion, member at the center, Mike.
I have a question.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Sorry, my name is Debbie Young. I live at Seventeen Maple Avenue in Situate.
Ms. Young, go ahead.
I have a question. How much in funds is in the retained earnings for the golf course?
On the question...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, ma'am? I'm sorry, I didn't quite get it.
How much is there in retained earnings in the golf course account?
Currently, the retained earnings on the account is eighty-three thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars.
Mark, could you give that again, please?
Eighty-three thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so vote and declare a majority vote. Article Five on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article has to deal with the transfer of a piece of land on the Ellis property from the school committee to the Board of Selectmen. Move that the town will vote to transfer to the care, custody, management, control of the Board of Selectmen from the school committee a parcel of land consisting of six acres, more or less, being a portion of Lot 1A in the Assessors Map Nineteen shown on Plim titled Division of Ellis Property, December nineteen sixty-nine, on file in the Town Hall at the Department of Public Work Office. Being a portion of these premises conveyed to the town of Situate by Henry W. Keyes Trustees under the will of J. Bailey Ellis by D. dated June twelve, nineteen sixty-nine, and recorded Plymouth Register D's Book Three-Five-Two-Eight, Page seven-sixty-eight. For the purpose of constructing a public safety complex provided, however, that such complex not commenced within three years from the effective date of the transfer, said portion will revert to the care, custody, and management of the school committee or take any other action relatively thereto.
It's been moved, seconded by Mr. Danahue, and discussion.
As part of the capital program that the town is undertaking, the need for a public safety building at the northern end, the north Situate end of Situate has been well-established over the years. This would build a public safety building for police and fire on this piece of property. And it would service the west end and north Situate, and mind it, much better than they're being served now.
For the advisory committee, Ms. Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The transfer of this land has been endorsed by the school committee, pending any reply from the MSBA that would indicate that the acreage would be needed for the construction of a new middle school. The intended use of this parcel is for the construction, as Joe indicated, for a public safety complex, and the advisory committee unanimously supports the movement of this motion.
For the school department superintendent McCarthy.
We are in support of this article. We voted this last night at school committee meeting unanimously. We feel that working closely with the town on the master plan, that this land could be used for a public safety complex. The school department will still retain over fourteen acres of the Ellis property if we so need to use it in the future for a school. It is not, we have not made a decision yet on the Gates feasibility study, that will begin in a couple of months. In terms of what we'll be looking at, we could be looking at a variety of things. So we know this land could sit vacant for a number of years. We certainly see the value of the town taking this for a public safety complex. We also will work very closely with the town to ensure that if we do need that land in the future, that we're able to use both, use it for both public safety and for school department uses. So again, we support this article.
Discussion, lady at the center, Mike.
Deborah Burke, two-oh-two, Old Oak and Bucket Road.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I just have a question that maybe you can clarify for me, but my understanding of the Ellis deed was that that property was left to the town as conservation property, and I don't really understand how it could be developed for use as a public safety building or anything else.
Anyone on the question?
Jim? Yeah, Tricia, thank you.
Town Administrator Vincaze on the question.
Hi, good evening. That entire parcel is over forty-two acres. Twenty-two acres of it is in the care and custody of the school committee, the remaining portion is conservation remaining under the estate. But that land was transferred to the care and custody of the school committee several years ago, and there's still twenty-two in conservation.
Thank you.
Gentlemen to my left.
Al Barrett, fourteen Michael Ave. I'd suggest that until the MSBA finding is in, until the public facilities master plan is finished and voted on by the town of Situate, and that the time that this land is needed for a public safety facility, that it belongs with the school committee that it was bequeathed to, and that there'll be plenty of time for the town to take this land for a school or a public safety facility, once the town has voted on the public facilities master plan.
Lady to my left.
Jay Gerbis, two-ninety-five Countryway. I guess I just wanted to get up and say that I think it's really important that Situate have open space, and I know twenty-two acres sounds like a lot, but I think the forty-plus sounds much better. I've been a fifty-odd-year resident of Situate, and the amount of open space that this town once had has greatly decreased, and I'm not so sure that all these buildings give as much to the town as you think they may.
Mr. Rock, Moderator.
Chairman Norton.
Thank you. I believe that they were statements, there's no question really to answer, so I'll leave it standard that they were statements, and thank you.
All right, there being no one else at the mic, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, I declare that the motion fails. Article Six on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Six is fiscal two thousand thirteen storm emergency mitigation costs. I move that the town transfer the sum of nine-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the stabilization fund to reimburse town and school departments to cover costs associated with unprecedented weather events in the town during fiscal year 2013, including but not limited to Hurricane Sandy, the October two thousand and twelve Northeastern, Storm Nemo, Storm Saturn, as follows. To departmental personal services and purchase of services, Hurricane Sandy account four-twenty-five the sum of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars. To departmental personal services and purchase of services, two thousand and twelve Northeastern account four-twenty-eight, the sum of sixty-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars. To departmental personal services and purchase of services, Storm Nemo account four-twenty-six the sum of six-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. To department personal services and purchase of services, Storm Saturn account four-twenty-seven the sum of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, Mr. Norton, these storm names, you didn't make them up, did you? Sounds like we're living in a cartoon.
No, no, I did not make them up. If I had thought of them, Mr. Moderator, I'm sure I would have named them better, but that choice was not left up to me, fortunately. I'd like to ask Town Administrator Patricia Vincaze to come up and address the storm situation and the damages caused by it.
Town Administrator Vincaze.
Thank you. As you know, we had an extraordinary year in terms of weather incidents in the community, over four major storms and just the regular snow that we've all experienced. This warrant article would fund from the stabilization fund the cost of very specific items. But before I go into that, I'd just like to take a moment to thank the extraordinary work that was done by citizens, employees, committees, and departments to respond to that storm. We always hope that there's no injuries or death associated with these storms, especially with major coastal flooding, and we're happy to report that that did not occur, particularly during Storm Nemo, when the police department lost the repeater on the cell tower, the generator, and Town Hall that services fire station and police station went down, and we were for about forty minutes with absolutely no communications. We were able to rally and evacuate citizens at the same time. While we can't thank all the people who were involved, I do want to recognize the DPW, the police, fire department, building department, board of health, the CERT team, and the shelter volunteers who did an extraordinary job, the school custodial and cafeteria staff, and the bus personnel that helped us return and pick up people at the shelter, the webmaster, Tom Rose, who did not have any electricity and was hand typing in his BlackBerry the storm advisories that I was writing and sending to him, all the snowplow contractors and other private contractors we have, National Grid, the library personnel who opened when school was closed, and we still had no electricity in a large part of the town, the recreation commission that opened to provide programs to children, and also donations from residents for food and the restaurants as well. And the board has asked me to ask all those folks who were involved in any part during the storms that we've had for the last, this past winter, to please stand so we can thank you for your service. So to the article at hand, we've had four major storms that Chairman Norton spoke about in terms of paying for the mitigation for this storm. It's almost a million dollars from the stabilization fund. These funds pay, will be transferred to pay for overtime costs for most of the departments that I just mentioned, including as well the shelter cost, as well as paying for contractors for the extraordinary debris that we've had to pick up as a result of these storms. Just to give you an example, we've spent a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars this year on Central Ave and Hummer Rock alone, and that was just for two storms. Now, this amount, as I said, covers overtime, repairs, or emergency acquisitions that needed to be made for several departments. It does not include seawall and foreshore protection remediation. That is right now estimated at five-point-six million dollars. We expect to get FEMA reimbursement for some of this work. Sandy has been declared, Hurricane Sandy eligible for disaster aid. Nemo, which was a much more severe impact to the town, is also right now pending to be ratified for certification for FEMA. In total, if we do receive funds that are eligible of that five-point-six million, seventy-five percent of it would be reimbursable, and then the town will be required to have a twenty-five percent cash match. So we have major road damage to Glades Road, Rebecca Road, and Oceanside at a cost of three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars. We expect we'll be using some of the road money for that this year, but the not, almost million dollars that you see from the stabilization fund is just to make sure the accounts through June thirtieth are fully funded to pay our obligations. Thank you.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Mr. Norton and Mr. Vincaze mentioned, there were a number of storms that impacted Situate this past winter. As a result, some of money was spent in order to counter the impact of that storm, so the advisory committee recommends unanimous approval of this motion.
Discussion, speaker to my left.
Paul Reedy, forty-three Otis Road.
Mr. Reedy.
Just a couple of quick questions. If we do receive the federal estate reimbursement, would that money be immediately returned back to the rainy day fund?
Chairman Norton on the question.
Yes, it would, Paul.
Thank you. And then secondarily, just looking forward to the other articles coming up, I know I'm brought up in the past, what we're trying to continue to do, reimbursing the rainy day fund. Am I correct in assuming that we're only going to put ninety thousand dollars towards the rainy day fund? We have two million dollars in free cash?
Town Administrator Vincaze.
So the ninety thousand is not for the stabilization fund, it's the reserve fund for the advisory committee? There's another article that appropriates the levy net with the difference in the levy, the levy limit and the levy net that goes into stabilization. So as I said, the ninety thousand is for the reserve fund. The two million dollars in free cash that you see there is actually going to be spent to the tune of about one-point-five million at town meeting tonight, leaving a balance of just over four-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars if everything's approved tonight.
And just while I'm here, the one-point-five million you're going to spend, is that part of the capital plan?
You've already spent two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars for the school security article, and then there's some additional overtime of a hundred thousand that was just spent at the special, and then there's another half a million as free cash pay-as-you-go capital under the proposed FY-14 capital plan under Article Three.
Okay, and then just lastly, because I know it's been a few years since I've been doing all the hard work that the Selectmen have been doing, and I apologize, rainy day fund versus stabilization fund in terms of the ninety thousand, you're going to take this nine hundred out of which?
There's three million in the stabilization, we're taking just a million to do this storm cost. The ninety thousand is the reserve fund for emergency and unforeseen under the control of the advisory committee.
And out of that fund, will you take a nine hundred thousand, what's the plan to put back?
What we did in the December two thousand and ten storm is we used the stabilization, and then we replenished it with free cash the next year, which was a hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars. We will try to allocate back to the stabilization fund as we have the ability to do that with free cash as part of our overall financial policies.
Great. Well, I just, my only concern is to take nine hundred thousand dollars, I'm glad there's three-point-one in there, but my past thoughts on how we were reimbursing that rainy day fund was at a much lesser rate than, obviously economic times are difficult, but to take nine hundred thousand out, I think we got to be cognizant of the fact that we need to make sure that there's enough there in case we have another storm.
Right. Three years ago, there was one-point-one million in stabilization. We have three million now, but that's really the true purpose of the stabilization fund, to have a reserve against unforeseen events, so this is really a true use of that fund.
So just to be clear, that if there is a reimbursement, it goes right back into where you're taking the nine hundred thousand from?
We will have to, we will replenish the reserve fund to the amount of money we get for FEMA for those items like roads and overtime, but the seawall work will have to be funded overtime because there's a twenty-five percent cash match.
So the nine hundred thousand that we are taking from the rainy day fund may be used for seawalls?
I'm sorry?
May be used for seawalls?
No, there's no money at this appropriation for seawalls.
I thought you just said that...
Okay, let's try to bring the discussion back to Article Six and the specific items in there. Go ahead.
I was just trying to be specific, of the nine hundred thousand dollars, I'm trying to figure out if we are reimbursed, how much is going to be put back, and I thought that the town administrator just alluded to the fact that some of it may be used for seawalls.
What I, what I'm trying to say, Mr. Reedy, is that we don't know how much money we're getting reimbursed yet for FEMA, those determinations have not been made yet, and so until we know that, we can't give you an accurate figure.
But I guess, again, my question is, I understand that you don't know the percentage that you're going to get back, but didn't you, didn't you say that you may be using that for some of the seawall disrepair?
All right. This line of questioning I'm going to bring to a close, it does not relate specifically to the items in Article Six. Do you have any concluding remarks you want to make on Article Six?
I'm just trying to figure out through the moderator, through the moderator, how much money's going to be put back on the nine hundred thousand you're taking from rainy day fund, I think it's pretty correct.
Okay, that's the question, Town Administrator, can you answer that question?
I know there's no percentage that you don't know.
Thank you. Could you answer the question, please?
In all candor, we can't give an estimate at this time.
Thank you. There being no one else at the mic, this requires a two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so vote and declare a two-thirds vote. If any seventh person challenges my determination, they may rise now. No one has risen. I'll accept a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and to reconvene the annual. Moved by Mr. Danahue, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor of dissolving the special town meeting and reconvene the annual meeting signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the special town meeting has concluded, the annual town meeting has resumed. Article One on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article One is a compensation of elected officials. I move that the town establishes salaries and compensation for all elected officials as follows, for the sum totaling sixty-nine thousand seven-hundred-and-seven dollars as follows. Selectmen chairman and legitimate expenses, fifteen hundred dollars. Selectmen members and legitimate expenses, two thousand dollars, that's four at five-hundred dollars a year. Assessors chairman and legitimate expenses, twelve hundred dollars. Assessors members and legitimate expenses, eight hundred dollars, that's two at four-hundred dollars. And the town clerk personal services, sixty-four thousand two-hundred-and-seven dollars.
So moved, seconded by Selectman Harris. Discussion, Chairman Norton.
This is an annual article. These salaries have to be set at town meeting, and that's why we bring it here to you tonight.
For the advisory committee, Chairman Sandin.
This is an annual article, as Joe mentioned. The advisory committee recommends approval of the motion unanimously.
Discussion from the floor. There being none, this requires a majority vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article II, on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Article II deals with revolving funds, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town reauthorize the following revolving accounts pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, which shall be kept separate and apart from monies by the treasury, and which shall be deposited receipts received that may be spent only from those sources identified below under source of funds without further appropriation during fiscal year 2013 and as identified below under use of funds, and shall be expended in the direction of those so indicated. Said annual amount expended from each revolving account shall not exceed the amount indicated below under fiscal year 14 limit.
And as printed in the warrant?
And as printed in the warrant, thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Murray. Discussion, Chairman Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. These revolving funds are money that go to these particular departments and accounts. It's funded by, it's funded by, in some cases, for example, the council on aging might fund their revolving fund through costs associated with field trips, et cetera, et cetera. Recreation might fund their revolving fund through programs, beach stickers, et cetera. The revolving funds, money to spend from those, by the recreation from those revolving funds are limited to what you see in the warrant and can be expended by the department head of that particular department.
From the advisory committee, Ms. Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The advisory committee voted seven to zero in favor of this article, and we recommend approval of the motion.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article III, on the motion, Chairman Norton.
Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article III is the annual capital improvement plan program. I move that the town appropriate and borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, and any other enabling authority, the following sums of money totaling $2,144,750 for the purpose of funding the cost of the fiscal year 2014 capital improvement plan submitted in accordance with Section 6-6 of the Situate Home Rule Charter, as provided in the warrant printed for this meeting, and further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sums.
Seconded by Selectman Harris. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to ask, as we've done in the past, the chairman of the capital improvement plan, Jamie Gilmore, to come up and explain the plan and answer any questions.
Chairman Gilmore. And just so the meeting understands, there are 17 separate motions. They have to go with this capital plan because there are different funding sources for each article, so we have to go through each one of them with separate motions. Chairman Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I'd like to thank the capital planning advisory committee for their work this past period in moving these, moving these motions forward. First motion is motion A. I move to transfer from free cash into the capital stabilization fund, the sum of $375,000 for the purpose of partially funding the purchase of a fire truck to replace the current ladder truck for the fire department. This is, will go into the stabilization fund. It's about half of what the value of a ladder truck would be. There is a committee already appointed looking into the worthiness of whether they purchase a ladder truck or another product called a quint or some other item, and I would expect that the balance of this would be dealt with in the fall meeting. Item B.
Okay, well, hold on. Let's get a second on that one. Seconded, Mr. Danahy. And Ms. Curran, if I could have your indulgence, maybe what I'll do is I'll just ask for the advisory committee's recommendation after each one of these motions? Would that work for you? Okay. The advisory committee, Ms. Curran.
Do you want to make a general statement for all of them?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
Ms. Curran is going to make an overall statement on all 17 items.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think it's important to note that the initial submission that the heads of the departments submitted to the town administrator was over $70 million, and that's the big picture in town of the needs that we need to evaluate on an annual basis. The capital planning committee, of which Mr. Gilmore is chairman of, reviewed the final submission from the town administrator, resulting in this $2.1 million. Also, a particular note, that's a little bit of a change this year, is the transfer from free cash of $604,000 into a capital stabilization fund, which was specifically developed at special town meeting in 2012 for the purpose of a savings encounter, if you will, for future projects. And those include some of our foreshore protection as well to start the plan. And the advisory board unanimously was in support of this article. And you want me to move the motions as they come up?
No, it's the chairman.
No, but I know, but...
No, that's fine. That's an overall recommendation, or do you have individual reports you want to make?
Overall, the advisory board recommends approval of the motions on the floor this evening for the capital plan.
Thanks. Okay, we have a motion and a second on a transfer for, from stabilization of $375,000 for partially funding a fire truck discussion. There being no one at the mics, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. B.
I move to appropriate the sum of $150,000 for the purpose of completing school-wide security installations in Situate public schools and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum.
Seconded by Mr. Danahy. Discussion. Chairman Gilmore.
I understand this, this would complete the security needs of the schools. I know there was $245,000 in the special meeting already granted, but this actually is the completion as planned for this year.
Discussion, person to my left.
Deborah Burke, 202 Old Oak and Bucket Road.
Ma'am.
My question is actually conjoined B and C. I, my question is, if we're spending 60, if we're spending $150,000 on school security, why do we need to spend $60,000 on replacement doors and gates? I would think doors would be a part of school security, and the two together just strike me as really an odd combination. I would think that one would be subsumed within the other, essentially. Thank you.
All right. On the question.
Where, what's the school security money being spent on? If not doors?
Okay. Well, Superintendent McCarthy.
The, the doors at gate are specific to the interior fire doors. The interior fire doors at gates no longer function properly, so the fire department has recommended that we replace some of those doors. It's basically a safety, student safety issue, so it's separate from security. The security money is being spent on securing the exterior of the school, as well as interior cameras connecting to the police department and developing a swipe system to enter into school buildings. So, security secures the outside, the gates, fire doors is B.
The outside does not involve the doors, is what you're telling me.
No, that is correct. All it is, is alarming the doors, securing the doors, locking the doors.
Thank you.
Not replacing them.
Further discussion on item B. There being no one at the microphones, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. C.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of replacing stair and cafeteria doors at the Gates Middle School.
Is there a second? Seconded, Mr. Danahy. Discussion, Chairman Gilmore.
These are not all of the doors at the Gate School. These are doors that were critically identified by the fire department as being in need of replacement.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a majority. D.
I move to appropriate the sum of $150,000 to complete Phase II of the school district technology plan for improved network operations, workstations, and wireless access to further to, to further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum.
Seconded, Mr. Murray. Discussion, Chairman Gilmore.
This is a part of our commitment to improve the technology in all of the schools. This is the sum that's required for this year's efforts.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. E.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $26,781, and from interest from stabilization the sum of $8,219 into the capital stabilization fund for the purchase of purchasing new voting machines for federal, state, and local elections.
Seconded, Mr. Danahy. Discussion.
This, basically, our voting machines are very, very old. They're not making them anymore, and this puts basically $35,000 into the stabilization fund so that the town clerk, as needed, would be able to procure said machines as quickly as possible. We, I now understand that they are waiting for approvals from the state as to which type of machines we should buy.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. F.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $58,750 for the purchase of replacing the current geographic information system and permitting program for town departments.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, Chairman Gilmore.
This is a licensing ability for the IT, our new IT department, to actually improve the general information systems in the town hall, benefiting permitting and assessors taxing.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous vote. G.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $129,000 into the capital stabilization fund for the purpose of continued investment into the town's foreshore protection program.
Seconded, seconded, Mr. Harris. Discussion, Chairman Gilmore.
This is an additional $129,000 being allocated for the foreshore protection program, particularly to deal with some of the damage resulting from some of the storms for foreshore protection.
Discussion from the floor. Gentlemen to my right.
Alan Greenberg, 122 Old Oak and Bucket Road.
Mr. Greenberg.
There are some serious questions about the current approach to protecting our coasts, and a lot of the old methods have been called into question. In addition to that, we have to consider significant changes in ocean heights, tides, and so on. I wonder what is the long-term plan that would enable us to not just be throwing money year after year at repairs that, within the foreseeable future, will no longer do the job?
On the question. Selectman Murray.
Thank you for raising that point. Seawalls and foreshore protection have been in the past, are now, and will be in the future, a very important of our strategy to maintain and protect our shoreline. However, as you accurately state, Alan, we do need longer-term planning, because as we've seen with the storms of this past year and previous years even before that, we're in a whole different ballgame in terms of, of storm frequency and storm intensity and so on and so forth. So, at our last meeting, in fact, the selectmen, we discussed putting together some long-term plans and putting together groups of people to start addressing this, exactly as you raise. But it is important that people understand that it's not an either-or. We need to do what we can to protect the value that we currently have, but we also have to change the conversation, improve the conversation, and talk much more seriously about long-term planning. So these are not an either-or situation. We're trying to move ahead on both fronts. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Further discussion. There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. H.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of complying with an EPA unfunded mandate required of municipalities to map and sample discharge points through town as part of its compliance with our national pollution discharge elimination system permit.
Seconded, Mr. Harris. Discussion, Chairman Gilmore.
From what I understand from the DPW, this, this is an unfunded mandate by the federal government, which is requiring, this is only the start of a program, requiring us to determine the product coming out of discharge points in the, in the, in the overall sewer system, I'm sorry, drainage system in the town. So this only starts that study.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. I.
I move to appropriate the sum of $400,000 for the purpose of maintenance and care of town roadways and sidewalks and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum.
Seconded by Mr. Danahy. Discussion, Chairman Gilmore.
This is again a part of the town's long-term commitment, annual work on the roads and sidewalks, upgrading and bringing them up to better quality.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. J.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $45,000 for the purpose of rebuilding the 1992 International Truck for the Highway Department.
Seconded, Mr. Danahy. Discussion, Chairman Gilmore.
We've actually, we actually, our committee went and looked at this truck. Basically, it's one of their large, big dump trucks that has the plow on the front and it can issue sand and salt out of the back. It's a $188,000 truck, and the actual body itself is rotted. The frame, the engine, everything else is in great shape. This should give us another eight or nine years in duration before we have to worry about replacing that type of a vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, could you tell us who's on the committee, and if they're here, ask them to stand up to be recognized?
Dave Capel is on the committee, David, and also Frank Nash, and I don't know if Tony's here tonight, I didn't see him. No, that, well, Tony, but Tony Messina.
Well, thank you very much for your service.
Definitely.
All right. Further discussion on item J, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. K.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 and transfer into the capital stabilization fund for the purpose of reducing the impact of future capital projects and debt.
Is there a second? Seconded, Mr. Danahy. Discussion, Chairman Gilmore.
This is again a commitment of the town to appropriate $100,000 annually into the capital stabilization fund.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, this requires a two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. L.
I move to appropriate the sum of $400,000 for the purpose of continuing the water department's strategic capital plan to replace aged and broken water...
strategic capital plan to replace aged and broken water main pipes and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum.
Seconded, Mr. Harris. Discussion Chairman Gilmore.
Again, our ongoing commitment to upgrade and replace old pipes, some that are still 1929, is just an annual effort.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics this requires a two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. M.
I move to transfer from sewer retained earnings the sum of $25,000 into sewer capital outlay for the purpose of building a shelter to protect the town's vacuum jet truck used to clear clogged mains.
Seconded, Mr. Harris. Discussion Chairman Gilmore.
This is, this town, the vac jet truck is a $190,000 piece of equipment that is kept over at the sewer department. It sits out in the weather. By putting this structure over it, it will actually last us longer.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Hey, Jamie. Jamie, do me a favor, don't vote into the mic.
Oh, don't?
Thanks.
Do or not?
No, don't.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I move to transfer from Waterways retained earnings the sum of $50,000 into Waterways' Capital Outlay for the purpose of replacing the granite block anchoring system at Coal Parkway Marina.
Seconded, Mr. Vignani. Discussion Chairman Gilmore.
This is a way of improving the way we tether boats in at the Coal Parkway Marina. Right now, we have these granite blocks with chains. This will improve by putting a pile system in. It's an environmentally friendly way to go and just more efficient.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a majority.
I move, I move to transfer from Waterways retained earnings the sum of $50,000 into purchase of services as its share of the $75,000 cost of constructing an outdoor wireless network in Situate Harbor.
Is there a second? Seconded, Mr. Vignani. Discussion Chairman Gilmore.
This is also part of our new IT effort by providing wireless service in the harbor will be actually accommodating two or three things. One, improving the network ability or access for tourism, safety for police and fire, and for the businesses at hand in the harbor.
Discussion from the floor. Gentlemen to the center, Mike.
Yes, hello. John Sullivan, 64 Townsend Road.
Sure.
And two questions. One is, what would keep this from really providing wireless access to just businesses? I think the utility as a tourist draw would be pretty low. So if that's the case, you know, why not bankroll internet services for the rest of the businesses in the rest of Situate? And the second question is, I assume the $50,000 is a first-year cost? How much will it cost us in internet access for the ongoing years?
On the question, Selectman Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To the first point, one of the main targets here is transient boaters. We have over, I think, 600 or 800 transient visitors who come into the harbor and therefore then use our business district and contribute to the healthful economy of Front Street and elsewhere. It's very common for other harbors up and down the New England seaboard to have wireless, so this will also bring us in line and help make our beautiful harbor even more attractive. So that's part of the large component on that as well. The second point you had was the O and M, the operation and maintenance in the future. I don't, off the top of my head, have a dollar value for that. I asked that same question myself when they came before the Board of Selectmen on this. It was a relatively small figure, and it will be built into future Waterways budgets, Waterways Enterprise Fund budgets, which as you know is funded entirely by slip fees and mooring fees and other user fees associated with the harbor. So we've taken very good financial care to make sure we don't saddle ourselves with an unfunded mandate, as it were. So we have the planning for this continued maintenance in our plans for the future. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion. There being no one at the mics, this approval of this motion would require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Further from the mic next time.
Sorry.
I know he wants it to pass. I mean, he's chairman of the committee. All right, we'll try it again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed, so voted and declared passed by a majority vote. P.
I move to transfer from Waterways retained earnings the sum of $32,000 into purchase of services for the purchase of installing video surveillance equipment for enhanced security at the town pier, Maritime Center, and Harbor Master's Office.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Discussion Chairman Gilmore.
This is basically to install cameras and surveillance for those areas for security. There has been this past year at the Maritime Center, I'm aware of, a break-in with damage, and if you're not over there with an eye on it, that's what can happen.
Gentlemen to my right.
Carson Frye, 242 Beaver Dam Road. So I understand you said there's been a break-in. I'm curious if this further motivation to create a video surveillance in what seems to me to be a public outdoors, public outdoor spaces. My point being, it might, I think it might be inherently, it's inherently wrong direction to go in to create, build toward any sort of closed-loop surveillance state in the interest of catching hypothetical crooks.
I think the question is, is this the first step to some broader surveillance scheme? On the question, Selectman Murray.
I believe that was somewhat of a statement, but I understand where you're going with that. I just offer reassurance that this is purely going to be used to, should there be events, to provide security, act as a deterrence. We have a tremendous amount of resources in the Maritime Center, the Harbor Master's Office, of course, as well, the town pier where our commercial fleet, much of our commercial fleet resides, as well as the rest of the floats on both the Coal Parkway side and the Maritime Center side. It's prudent. Unfortunately, it's necessary. Vandalism is increasing, and we need this to protect our resources. There's nothing more to it than that. Thank you.
Did you have a follow-up, sir?
Pardon, pardon statement.
Did you have a follow-up question, sir?
No question, just, just wanted to.
No, go ahead.
Broad picture.
The floor is yours.
You answered, answered my question of, just curious about the broader, broader picture or history of motivation for such a project.
Further discussion. There being no one at the mics this requires a majority vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a majority. Finally, Q.
I move to transfer from water retained earnings the sum of $35,000 into purchase of services for the purpose of replacing door and windows and repairs to the heating system at the Harbor Master's Office.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion Chairman Gilmore.
We looked into this. This building is 29 years old. It looks nice from the outside, but when you are actually there and it's raining, the water comes through the windows, the heating system is antiquated, and it's, right now, it's economical because the prices are low for contractors, and it would be a nice thing to get this done so we don't have yet another building that has deteriorated.
Discussion from the floor. I'll just say that this building is so old that it's the first building that had Selectman Norton's name on it as a plaque.[1169.73][1169.73](LAUGHTER). It's true. There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and by a majority vote. Okay, thank you. Now, we get to the budget. So, what we'll do with the budget is what we've done in prior years. The chairman will make what I call an omnibus motion, which describes the funding sources. You may, if you have your advisory committee booklet with you, want to turn to page 57. I'll go through each of the line items, not each particular one, but the general headings, you know, 122 Board of Selectmen, 123 Town Administrator, and so on. If there's something that you want to discuss, please say hold. When we're done going through all the holds, we will vote everything that was not held, and then we will go back and discuss the held items. So with that explanation, Chairman Norton on the omnibus motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The motion on the budget. I move that the town raise and appropriate $59,248,247 and transfer from the Gulf Enterprise Fund the sum of $52,858. From Wastewater Enterprise, the sum of $199,962. From Water Department Enterprise, the sum of $244,300. From Transfer Station Enterprise, the sum of $131,025. From Waterways Enterprise Fund, the sum of $83,124. From Title V Assessments, the Cable Grant, the sum of $97,150 to the General Fund. Excuse me, I think I skipped a line. Title V Assessment, the sum of $6,858. From Debt Premium Reserve, the sum of $11,537,000. From the PEG Access Cable Grant, the sum of $97,150 to the General Fund. And the sum of 50, it looks like, is that 53? $53,931 for the Massachusetts School Building Assistant Reserve totaling $60,128,992 for the purpose of funding personal services and expenses for town operations as may be necessary for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2013 as follows.
Seconded by Selectman Murray. Did you wish to make any remarks at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I could spend 45 minutes, I suppose, remarking on the budget, remarking of the state of the town, but it would come down really to a few words. The state of the town, we're in relatively good shape. We've had a very good financial forecasting put into place a few years ago. We had our bond rating increase during the past year, which make, will make it easier to borrow money and at a cheaper rate. As I said earlier tonight, of course, we do have our issues, and we have our challenges that we'll have to face, the same type of challenges we've faced in the past. We are in pretty good shape now. We're thankful for that, and moving forward, I think we'll be able to deal with all the problems that come forward to us. So, basically, that's my State of the Union, State of the, State of the Town address. We're doing fine financially. We're probably in as good shape financially as we've been in the last few years certainly, maybe even the last 10 or 15 years. So we're thankful for that. We're able to do things to help the citizens and residents and infrastructure of the town that we may not have been able to do if the money was a little tighter. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Now, the advisory committee works very hard all year reviewing the budgets. So at this point, and the advisory committee is your board, it's a standing body of town meeting, so at this point, I'll turn the proceedings over to Chairman Sandem, who will give you the advisory committee's take on the budget. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a point of clarification, the moderator had referenced, towards page 57, we actually have the budget kind of laid out, all the numbers here in two parts. On page 27 is where the article is in the booklet, breaks it down in totality.
Thank you.
Page 57 takes essentially the same numbers, and we added on the far-right column for the purposes everyone to see is, what is the fiscal change on a year-over-year basis? So, just a little bit of clarification there. As far as the budget, I thought it would be good to kind of explain, so what does the advisory committee do here during the course of its review of the budget? So I thought tonight I'd kind of give everyone an overview of the budget process and what the committee does. In November of last year, all the various departments are compiling their budgets and working with the town administrator. And when the budgets are finalized towards the end of the year, the advisory committee convenes through the first quarter of the year and meets on a weekly basis to review each one of the items here that you see before you. So we're going through each one of the various departments, the general government departments, 17 of those, public safety force, both the school budgets, public works, four departments there, human services, recreation, the benefits, and the debt budget. In addition, the committee will review each one of the five enterprise fund budgets, goals, objectives. So the process of the evaluation is looking at each department, each line item within the department, what the department's mission, objectives, goals, and what it's doing to support the community as a whole. So following this, we'll review the various expenditures at those line items, and specifically each one of these costs that you see here, personal services, purchasing, supplies, capital, if it's required. Where possible, each one of those departments will benchmark their expenses against similar communities and provide the committee with supporting documentation for any changes on a decrease or an increase basis. So, despite, as Joe mentioned, a sound and a balanced operational budget that we present for you tonight, challenges still do exist here within our community. The challenge is to continue with the numbers we have here to provide quality education and municipal services in combination with some extensive current capital needs, which we've already heard this evening relative to the special and some of the items right here on the annual, such as seawalls, roads, water systems, et cetera, as well as some of the proposed future capital projects that are in the foreseeable future, for instance, a master plan. So all this at a time when current state aid and Chapter 90 and Chapter 70 monies are either slightly down or flat, but yet our operational costs are forecast to continue, and some are more manageable and some are, can be extensive, such as some pension liability expenses and other post-employment benefits which certainly loom on the horizon, and I'm sure you're all aware of. So, some of the main financial messages of this operational budget are as follows, that we continue to use the 2.5% levy limit, there's a slight decrease in the new growth, and we're pretty much flat on the local receipts. Based on some of the indications from the state, that we're planning a slight reduction in the Chapter 70 state aid funds. I think most of you have filmed earlier and heard in the news, the ongoing debates and discussions between the executive and legislative branches, trying to come up with a amicable solution for, for funding and for the various towns. The budget takes into account a significant decrease in some of the group and health insurance costs. You'll see an increase in the debt service. While that was offset by our increase in the rating, most of you remember back in November, our increase in rating from S and P up to a double A plus, but there was a slight increase in the debt service related to the issuance last November. We continue to have expenses dedicated to capital projects and improvement. There's some costs focusing on increases that are necessary for public safety, some of which we've talked about this evening, veteran services, as well as council on aging. I mentioned the pension expenses. While there's an increase here in the appropriation in this budget... While there's an increase here in the appropriation in this budget, expenses in the future are forecast to increase more than they have in the current year. As in the past couple of years, no free cash or stabilization funds have been used to support the operational budget you see here. And if you jump back to the final pages on 57, just some of the general increases, breaking down, general government increases are 2 percent, public safety is up 4.2, schools up 4, public works increased 2.3, human services 22.8, although it only represents a very significant portion of the budget, recreation library up 1 percent, debt, as I mentioned before, up 14.4, and employee benefits are down a negative 3.9. So in total, as you see on page 61 there, year-over-year increase, last year 58.4, this year 60.1 million for a 3 percent increase in our annual budget. That summarizes the budget, and the advisory committee recommends approval of this motion unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to you and members of the advisory committee for the countless hours and days of work that you put in in preparing this for the meeting tonight. If you could all give the advisory committee a round of applause. Now, I've been duly corrected. You should not be looking at page 57, you should be looking at page 20. So if you, I'll give you a second to get page 20 if you don't already have it. All right. What I'll do is I'll go through, I'll read off each general departmental heading. If you want to discuss something under that general heading, please say in a loud voice, "Hold." You don't have to go up to a mic, just say it loud enough so I can hear it. I'll keep moving along. At the end, everything that is not held will be voted, and then we'll go back and discuss the held items, and you'll have a chance to ask your question about the item that you wanted held. So here we go. Item 122, Board of Selectmen. Hold. Well, that didn't take long. Okay, well, see, now you see how it's done, and, okay. Item 123, Town Administrator. Hold. Item 131, Advisory Committee. Item 132, Reserve Fund. Item 135, Town Accountant. Item 141, Assessors. Item 145, Treasurer Collector. 149, Administration. Hold on 149. 155, Information Technology. 158, Tax Foreclosures. Was it, did somebody say anything? No, okay. I know people get excited about tax foreclosure, so you never know. 159, Cable TV. 161, Town Clerk. 171, Conservation. 175, Planning Board. 176, Zoning Board of Appeals. 182, Economic Development Commission. 192, Property Liability Insurance. 210, Police. 220, Fire. Hold 220. 241, Inspections. 295, Shellfish. 300, School Committee. Hold. Hold 300 School Committee. 310, Salt Shore Regional School. 400, Public Works. 410, Facilities. 423, Snow and Ice. 424, Streetlights and Beacons. 510, Board of Health. 541, Council on Aging. 543, Veterans Benefit Services. Hold on 543. 549, Commission on Disabilities. 610, Library. 630, Recreation. 650, Beautification. 691, Historical Buildings. 720, Debt and Interest. 910, Non-Contributory Pensions. 911, Plymouth County Retirement. 912, Workers' Compensation. 913, Unemployment Insurance. 914, Contributory Group Insurance. 916, Federal Taxes. Whoa, I want to see who's going to hold federal taxes. That surveillance scheme that the gentleman was talking about might have come in handy, then. Okay, here are the items that were held. 122, Board of Selectmen. 123, Town Administrator. 149, Administration. 155, Information Technology. 220, Fire. 300, School Committee. 543, Veterans Benefit Services, and that was it. I'll accept a motion to approve all unheld items. Moved by Selectman Murray, seconded by Chairman Norton. Because you didn't hold it, there is no discussion. All those in favor of approving the unheld items signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. We now return to the held items, beginning with item 122.
Alan Greenberg, 122 Old Oak and Bucket Road. All of the holds I placed were based on what seemed to be significant increases, and I'm just looking for explanations of those significant increases. So in this one, it's a town council.
On the question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You know, I hate to say it, but it's kind of a rough estimate on stuff, and it's all based on the litigation matters that we're involved in. And there's a number of them going on right now, the turbine and different properties and, you know, police and fire issues. So it's really just our best estimate, and based on the number of litigation matters that are up in the air right now, that number is estimated at.
Gentleman at the center, Mike.
Joe Gibbons, 223 Gannett Road.
Joe, could you just give the name again?
Pardon me?
The mic didn't pick up your name.
Joe Gibbons, 223 Gannett Road.
Thanks.
I'm just concerned with, on number 122, over the course of the last four or five years, we've seen a steady increase in legal fees. Why, over the last four or five years, has this steadily gone up? I'd like to ask the advisory committee or somebody.
I'll try and answer.
Mr. Vignani.
Unfortunately, it's the same answer as the one before. We really have no control over who sues us and what they sue us for, and there has been a number of big issues that have occurred over the last year. Any money that we do not use, that we estimate on these matters, goes right back to the general fund, and this is our best estimate in terms of the legal expenses that we spent in the previous years and what we expect the expenses to be in the upcoming year for those matters.
I beg to differ under number 123, Mr. Vignani, because labor council fees have increased steadily in the last four to five years. Could you please explain more as to why those fees are going up? We're not being sued under labor council.
Uh, Mr. Vignani, hold on. Mr. Gibbons and Mr. Vignani, we're going to hold on 123, we're just going to take care of 122 first. So Joe, did you have anything else on 122?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Anthony, are you holding for a different hold?
300.
Okay. There's no one else at the mics on 122? In the absence of further discussion or any amendment, I'll accept a motion to approve 122 as printed. Moved by Mr. Danahi, seconded by Mr. Murray. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared, approved by a majority vote, 122 is disposed of. Item 123, I'm going to let Mr. Gibbons begin questioning on that one, then I'll go to Mr. Greenberg.
And my question is, once again, over the last five years, we've seen labor council fees increase. You know, why is that?
Well, you know...
Mr. Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's made up of two components. It's made up of the actual legal fee to negotiate the contracts, and there's been a couple of longer-running contracts, and it's also the mitigation involved in settling those contracts. So those are the two components in that line item.
Yeah, but why has it increased? In the past, I believe, didn't the town administrator, wasn't he actively involved in those negotiations, and we paid less out in legal fees to outside counsel, rather than, you know, doing it in-house, rather than, you know, farming it out? I mean, if you look over the course of four or five years, you can't deny that those labor council fees have really skyrocketed.
Ms. Vignani.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. First of all, it's she, the town administrator, and...
It was a he, I was referring to the prior...
Five years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four or five years ago, yeah.
Both the town administrator and town council are involved in all of the contract negotiations. There's counsel involved for every single one of them, as there was before with the previous town administrator.
So you say, you know, she's doing less of it, and now we're doing more of it with outside counsel? Is that what you're saying?
Again, it depends on the complexity of the contract and where we're going on it. I don't know what you're getting at here, other than there's been some very serious contract negotiations over the last three or four years, and it costs money to go through the process.
Tony, I beg to differ. If you look at the fees that we paid in labor council five years ago versus what we're paying now, the percentage increase is way higher than your other percentages in all the departments. There's got to be some type of explanation better than that, but if you can't give a better explanation, I'll accept it and go away. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Greenberg, to my right.
I had a parallel question, but also the increase in personal services?
In the town administrators?
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Vignani, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The town administrator back in the... Excuse me? Right. So there's three people in that budget. There's Sheila, and Chris, and the town administrator. I think there's some additional hours for the administration over the last couple of years, and the town administrator's contract was renegotiated about a year and a half ago. And those are the increases in that.
So it's just the result of those negotiations?
Yes.
And what...
And a few additional hours of, you know, of administrative help that may have been allocated to that department.
Was there an evaluative component there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Was there an evaluative component involved?
I don't know what you're saying.
Did they, what, did you do a job evaluation of the town administrator?
Did we do an official evaluation of the town administrator?
Which would be part, in many places, of increases.
No, there was no, there was no evaluation increase. It was all based on our contract.
Lady at the center, Mike. Hold on, are you still holding, Anthony? Okay. Lady at the center, Mike.
Elizabeth Dow, 52 New Kent Street.
Ma'am.
Tony, I was just wondering if you could explain what the salary adjustments were? $10,000 each?
Yeah, those are, there's a certain number of staff people that are non-union staff, and those are the increases for the non-union staff.
Okay.
All right. There being no further discussion on item 123, I'll accept a motion to approve. Moved by Mr. Danahi, seconded by Mr. Harris. We've had our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." All those opposed? 10 minutes are nigh, and we're all feeling a little bit lazy. Let's really belt it out this time. All those in favor of the motion to approve 123 signify by saying "aye." All those opposed? All right, I'm going to declare that it passed by a majority vote. If any seven people challenge my determination... Ah, 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 none of that. If any seven people challenge my determination, you may rise now, and we will take a counted vote. I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Okay. Will the tellers take their positions, please? Well, if this gets voted down, then we can move on to the next one, or you guys will have to come up with something. Okay. Are you ready, Kathy?
Yeah, let's just...
All right. What color are the cards?
Pink.
Okay, we've got pink cards. All those in favor, and by the way, this requires only a majority vote, all those in favor of approving Section 123, Town Administrator of the Budget, as printed on page 20 of the warrant, may signify... I'm going to ask you to say yes or no. Yes, when I ask for the yes votes, hold up your cards. When I ask for the no votes, hold up your cards, the tellers will count. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your cards now. Kathy, who's counting the front? Which isn't here? Penny, could you come up? Rest your arms for one minute. We're going to, we need a teller for this section, so... Penny Scott Pipes is going to do it. We're going to swear and have her do it. Kathy, could you just describe to Penny the section that she pulled up their cards to see if everybody's real clear?
Yep.
The Selectmen's table, and where else?
Left front floor, Selectmen and the boards and committees, right behind Susan Franklin.
Okay. Could the Selectmen's table and the left front floor hold up your cards so Ms. Pipes can count her votes? All set? All right. Right rear bleacher.
37.
Chris, that's you. I'm sorry, what was it, Chris?
37.
37. Right front bleacher. Tom?
29.
29. Right rear floor, run.
32, 32.
32. Didn't sound like a run. Right center floor.
31, 31.
31. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee. 31. Left rear bleacher. 33. Left front bleacher.
10, 1-0.
1-0. Left rear floor.
23, 23.
Thank you, George. 23.
Two, three.
Thank you, George. Two, three. Left center floor.
Twenty. Two, zero.
Two, zero. Left front floor includes moderator, I didn't vote, clerk, selectmen, and registrars. Penny.
Zero. Two, zero.
Two, zero. Okay. All right. All those opposed, please hold up your cards. Right rear bleacher.
Forty-four. That's four, four.
Four, four. Right front bleacher.
Twenty-five. Two, five.
Two, five. Right rear floor.
Eleven. One, one.
One, one. Right center floor.
One, zero. Ten.
One, zero. Right front floor, including the advisory committee and school committee.
Three.
Three. Left rear bleacher.
Nineteen. One, nine.
One, nine. Left front bleacher.
One.
One. Left rear floor.
Twenty-two. Two, two.
Two, two. Left center floor.
Twenty-one. Two, one.
Two, one. Left front floor includes the moderator, clerk, selectmen, and registrars.
Zero.
Zero. By a vote of 266 in favor and 156 opposed, item 123 is adopted. Adopted. Could be adopted on doorstep, but it's adopted. Next held item was 149, administration. Okay, I know somebody held it. Gentlemen to my left.
Bernie Westerveld, 12 Harborview Road.
Sir.
I'm kind of puzzled about the shift in cost between personnel services we have ourselves and purchases of services. Can you elaborate on that?
On the question, Selectman Vignani.
If I understand that... Thank you, Ms. Moderator. You want to know what the difference between the two line items are?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the personnel services are payroll and benefits for any of the employees that are in that department. And personnel services are expenses that are associated with that department, which could be training, it could be legal expenses, it could be copy machines, it could be any sort of technical component that's used in that department, postage, payroll services, whatever the department happens to be in. Thank you.
There being no further discussion, no, well, I don't have a motion. Is there a motion to approve Section 149? Selectman Danahy, seconded by Selectman Murray. Further discussion, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. The next item held was 155, information technology. Mr. Greenberg's coming to the mic.
Excuse me. Alan Greenberg, 122 Old Oak and Bucket Road.
Sir.
Uh, the substantial increase in purchase of services? Purchase of services increase? Explanation.
On the question, Selectman Vignani.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. So the increase in that budget is due to substantial upgrade in a lot of the equipment that we're doing. Bill, our IT director, can go into the details if you want, but I know we're changing, we're upgrading our exchange servers, not if I'm getting it right, and we're increasing some of the other security features and equipment that's in our IT department. You know, for the last two or three years, this has been a main focus of the town to get our IT department up to a higher level, and this is another step towards that.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept 155 as printed? Moved by Mr. Danahy, seconded by Mr. Harris. There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority. Next item held was 225. Lady to my left.
Anne Burbine, 10 Penny Chris Road.
Ms. Burbine.
I have a concern, Mr. Moderator. I am fully supportive of this budget, but I am concerned that we are short-staffed in terms of the fire department, that we are only using one ambulance, that mutual, we do use mutual aid, but if our truck is two hours at the hospital and others are otherwise occupied, it's a public safety issue. I also find it somewhat disconcerting that we have put $375,000 earmarked in free cash toward a new ladder truck, yet often we cannot send out the ladder truck because of lack of personnel. And I understand through the fire department that we are minus at least two, and according to a letter in The Mariner, which you may or may not believe, upwards of seven people that we were short in the fire department. What is the plan going forward to ensure public safety, that the ambulance, we have two and we have a mutual aid, but we're only running one? What is the plan for public safety? Thank you.
On the question, Selectman Vignani.
I'll do my best, and if need be, Chief Judge can come up. In terms of the personnel, I know that there has been a few shorthanded situations, and it just, there's a long time gap in getting those positions filled. In terms of whether we need more personnel to run an ambulance or more personnel in general, I know that in this year's budget, we're performing a study to take a look at that exactly, to see how our personnel is being used in the fire department, and if there's a way for us to do it better. I don't know if Chief Judge has anything to add to that. You know, those are the two components that I'm aware of.
Chief Judge.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The current staffing with the fire department, we, it's like five years ago, we had basically 12 firefighters on a shift, and we wouldn't get lower than 10. Presently, we have, there's two positions we no longer have, and there's two that are unfilled. Looking at this budget that we presented, we probably won't get through the year again without running short. We started running at nine members in December, so we made five months before we started running out of money. So, like all the department heads I have to live within my budget, so we cut back. By doing that, we don't man the ladder truck, or we don't run the second ambulance, because not only do we run an ambulance, I'm in charge of fire safety in the town, and I can't do it safely by sending all our assets out of town to the social hospital, where it takes two and a half to three hours round trip to get back. So, I really don't know what to tell you. We're, you know, I agree with you, but, you know, say, there are hard times. We're trying to all live within our budgets and do more for less.
Lady to my left.
Hi. I don't understand why fire trucks have to go out for medical...
Excuse me, ma'am, could you just identify?
Oh, Eileen Donaldson. I live at 64 Situ Trail.
Thank you, Ms. Donaldson.
I don't understand for medical emergencies why fire trucks have to go out. I, paramedics are a lot less expensive, and the wear and tear on engines would be a lot less if they went out less often for fires. It just is real strange to me that when I look at the newspaper and the account of police and fire, police, I would say probably 95% of those cases are medical, not fire, if not higher. So what justifies engines going out with personnel?
Well, first of all, medical aids consist of 62% of all our calls, and the reason why we send an engine with an ambulance is for, one, we really don't know what the condition of the patient is. And if certain procedures have to be performed, like CPR, you can't do it successfully with two people in transport. Secondly, it's the safety of the firefighters, which I take personally. And you had a lot of people living on second floors, small old stairways, winding, and it's very difficult. The stretcher itself is heavy enough, you put a good-sized patient on it with two people, and they're all going to the hospital. So that is why we send two people, I mean, two trucks.
Further discussion. There being no one at the mics, I'll accept a motion regarding line 220. Mr. Danahy has moved to approve as printed. Selectman Vignani has seconded. All those in favor of item 220 as printed in the warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. The gentleman who's been hiding in the corner on item 330 to my left... Or 300, pardon me.
300. Right. Mr. Moderator, my name is Anthony Antonello, and I live at 34 Marion Road Extension. I am also a member of the advisory board, but I'm not speaking as a member of the advisory board. I'm speaking as a private citizen. Now, if my hold is out of order, I'm sure you will rule on that immediately. What I'm asking, what I'm asking town meeting is, would town meeting in the future like to see more detail from the school committee on their budget rather than the typical one-line entry for an over $30 million budget? That's my question, and that's what I'm asking the school committee. Thank you.
Well, I think I can answer that very easily.
But not until I recognize...
I'm sorry.
Superintendent McCarthy.
The school committee would be happy to provide whatever information town meeting would require or the advisory committee would ask for. Certainly, this budget process has been very transparent from the beginning, began back in November. We had a Saturday morning public budget discussion that we invited the, basically publicized the whole town, and as well as invited the boards to my left and right. And we also had several meetings with the school committee that were publicized when we discussed our budget. We publicized our budget and the reasons why on the school website. We distributed a very detailed narrative that spelled out the goals of the budget and how every item in the budget was connected to those particular goals. We used a zero-based budgeting approach in developing this budget and made sure that the money that's being appropriated here tonight was being used in the best possible way to advance the interests of the Situ Public Schools and the community of Situ. As you know, what's happened over the last several years is the school department, like every department, has taken some significant cuts. Our class sizes, if you have children in the schools right now, you realize that our class sizes have risen, particularly at the elementary schools where class size really make a difference and really matter. So this is a very responsible budget, one that begins to put back some of the cuts that we exhibited over the last couple of years, but nevertheless is still falling far short of where we were back in 2008, 2009. But to answer the gentleman's question, the school committee would be more than happy to provide whatever information town meeting would require to support this budget. Thank you.
Further discussion. Mr. Antonello.
Yes, I'm fine. I know you have a lot of hearings and meetings in the school, but my question was, why don't you present something like that at this town meeting? These are the voters, and they would like to know what's in your budget. You have a $30 million budget every year, and all you have in your budget, in the book, is one line, just one line, $30 million. Other budgets, they have to explain $20, $50, $150. That's my question. Can't you make that a policy, that when you come to town meeting, you make a presentation to the town and explain to them what is in this $30 million? That's all I'm asking.
And I agree. I would be happy to do that.
All right. What I'm going to suggest is that perhaps the advisory committee and the superintendent get together and have a discussion about perhaps something that could be presented in the advisory committee book next year that sets it out in greater detail. Okay. There's no one else at the mics. Is there a motion on item 300? Moved by Selectman Murray, seconded by Selectman Vignani. We've had discussion, requires a majority vote. This is to approve as printed in on page 22 of the advisory committee booklet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority. The next held item is 543 Veterans Benefits Services. And gentleman to my right.
Alan Greenberg, 122 Old Oak and Bucket Road. Again, question has to do with the increases, and I'd like some examples rather than just a blanket statement that there have been increases.
Selectman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll do the best I can, Alan. This, the big line that has increased here is the, it's the support line, and if you, I'll give you a few quick numbers that may help this out. Back in 2012, we had approximately three claims. So these are three veterans that were receiving benefits from the town, that the town pays for. And the town expense was about $49,000. Since that time, we've had a much stronger outreach program. We have a full-time veteran agent, Don Knapp, and we have a Veterans Council, I'm sure Mr. Kelly's here somewhere, and all those veterans that are out there trying to get the services to the veterans that are in need. And since that time, in this year, we've already spent more than that in half the year, and we expect that to continue to increase in the next year. So this year, it will probably run around $100,000, $120,000, and next year, we're expecting it to be about $150,000. I think at this point in time, the number of claims has gone from about three to just under 20. Is that enough detail?
That's fine. Thank you.
Further discussion. Is there a motion? Moved by Selectman Danahy, seconded by Selectman Norton to approve as printed on page 23 at Section 543. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. I believe that brings us to the end of the holds. If you'd just wait one second. Madam Town Administrator, do you need a final motion? I'm going to take a vote on the omnibus motion that... Back in two thousand and twelve, we had approximately three claims. So these are three veterans that were receiving benefits from the town, that the town pays for, and the town expense was about forty-nine thousand dollars. Since that time, we've had a, a much stronger outreach program. Um, we have a full-time veteran agent, Don Knapp, and we have a, a Veterans Council, uh, I'm sure Mr. Kelly's here somewhere, um, and all those veterans that are out there trying to get the services to the veterans that are in need. And since that time, in this year, we've already spent more than that in half the year, and we expect that to continue to increase in the next year. So this year, it will probably run around a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and next year, we're expecting it to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think at this point in time, the number of claims has gone from about three to just under twenty. Is that enough detail?
That's fine, thank you.
Further discussion. Is there a motion? Uh, moved by Selectman Danahue, selected by, uh, seconded by Selectman Norton to approve as printed on page twenty-three at, at section five, four-three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. I believe that brings us to the end of the holds. If you'd just wait one second.
Madam Town Administrator, do you need a final, uh, motion or a second?
I'm gonna take a vote on the omnibus motion that Chairman Norton made in the beginning that relates to all the different funding sources. We just wanna have that properly lined up for Ms. LaMay when she does her reconciliations. All those in favor of the omnibus motion offered by Chairman Norton about an hour ago signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. That concludes action on the budget, and that brings us to Article Five. On the motion, Selectman Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, this Article Five has to deal with the pension assessment offset. Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars and to transfer the said sum into the town stabilization fund for the purpose of offsetting fiscal year two thousand and fifteen cost increases to the town's Plymouth County Retirement Assessment for town and school employees.
Sir, second, seconded by Mr. Vignani. Discussion, Selectman Murray.
Uh, as outlined in your advisory booklet, this article allocates, uh, that amount of money to the stabilization fund. We need to keep putting money into this to make sure that we, uh, cover the retirement costs, the anticipated Plymouth County retirement costs. It's an estimate, which is why it's a nice round number. Um, the increase could be as much as twenty percent, which will be several hundred thousand dollars, and this is getting us in the right direction. Thank you.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, as Selectman Murray indicated, approval of this article would allocate seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to stabilization fund, which would help offset, uh, some of the anticipated, uh, increases in the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen Plymouth County Retirement Assessment. Um, the town has been, uh, made aware that that increase could be, uh, as much as twenty percent, which would equate to, uh, several hundred thousand dollars. Um, the allocation that's being asked for will help off, uh, help offset the total impact of the town's Plymouth County Retirement Obligation in fiscal year tw- two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the advisory committee voted unanimously in support of this article.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from available funds in the Waterways Enterprise receipts the sum of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand and sixty-nine dollars, and for the purpose of funding the Waterways Enterprise Fund for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and thirteen as follows. For personal services, three hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars, and for other expenses, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Sir, second, seconded, Mr. Danahue. Discussion, Selectman Murray.
Uh, the Board of Selectmen, uh, voted unanimously in favor of this article. Uh, as came up in the conversation earlier this evening, the enterprise fund is funded entirely by, uh, charges to the, um, boating community, slip fees, mooring fees, and so on. And because it's an enterprise fund, the funds are required to be used to, uh, maintain and improve services, uh, within the, the harbor confines, and for, um, services and activities related to the commercial fleet, the recreational fleet, um, as well. Uh, so this is, uh, allocating, um, and allowing the enterprise fund to essentially do its job in this coming year. Uh, there are no significant operational changes from the previous year. Um, there's a number of projects going on, uh, small projects, large projects, some of them are listed in your advisory book, um, but in particular coming up, we're doing a major rehabilitation of the town fishing pier, um, a significant portion of which, I believe eighty percent is funded by the state, twenty percent by us, um, funded by the Seaport Advisory Council. Um, we're doing some clam reseeding to help, uh, support the clamming community. We're having a new pump-out boat to maintain and improve the quality of the water, uh, in our no-discharge zone. This, uh, enterprise fund is, uh, advised, uh, by the, uh, Waterways, uh, Commission. Um, it's currently chaired by Mr. Dick Eckhart, and, um, uh, Mr. Mark Patterson, the harbor master, serves as a ex-officio member, and so we have strong citizen involvement and citizen oversight of this, and they make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
From the advisory committee, Ms. Daley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I just wanna say that Mr. Patterson does a great job managing this budget. This year, there's a surplus, and the retained earnings at the balance of town meeting will be six hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The advisory committee recommends approval of this article and this motion unanimously.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimously adopted. Article Seven.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This has to deal with another enterprise fund, this one dealing with the golf course. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from available funds in the Golf Course Enterprise Fund receipts the sum of one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars for the purpose of funding the Widow's Walk Golf Course for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and thirteen as follows. Personal services, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, and the other expenses of one million, fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. And the, uh, Board of Selectmen unanimously supported this article.
Seconded by Mr. Norton. Discussion.
Um, oops, thank you, I got ahead of myself. Uh, the Board of Selectmen unanimously supported this article. Um, it's an enterprise fund, just like the Waterways one we did. Uh, it's funded by, um, the receipts at the golf course, and the money gets plowed right back into the golf course. As, uh, described in your booklet, um, as you recall, the golf course has a very large debt service, and that debt service is going to be retired in fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, which is actually just around the corner, so I'm just letting people know about that. And the amount of this, uh, budget in the enterprise fund that's to service that debt is about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that debt, of that dollar value I just gave you is for debt service, and as a look ahead in, uh, two thousand and seventeen, that will be done significantly changing this budget. But it is budgeted. Um, Bob Sanderson does a great job running the course. We're increasing the number of users, we're offering a whole bunch of new other programs associated with the golf course, and as I said, the Selectmen, uh, unanimously support this article.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Westmore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, basically, the budget is tight. Some years you hit a par, some years you hit a bogey. This year, it looks like we're gonna make about eight grand in surplus. Um, and as he said, in the next coming years, we're gonna have quite a bit of surplus coming down the aisle. Uh, basically, at the end of the year, they're gonna have about eighty-three thousand dollars in retained earnings, and the advisory, not at the end of the year, sorry, they have eighty-three thousand retained earnings. The advisory committee recommends approval of this article.
Discussion from the floor, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Eight. Mr. Harris.
I move that the town transfer from available funds in wastewater enterprise fund receipts the sum of two billion, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars, and one hundred and twenty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars from wastewater retained earnings, and six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollars from raise and appropriate for the purpose of funding the wastewater treatment plant operation and expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and thirteen as follows. Personnel services, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Other expenses, two million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Danahue. Discussion, Mr. Harris.
This enterprise is just one of five. All right, as I stated in the motion, we're allocating different portions of the two hundred, two-point-five million dollars to salaries and other expenses for the day-to-day operations that the plant needs to run efficiently.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Antonello.
And the advisory board book their, uh, there's about, oh, fifteen lines of detail for this budget, and, uh, what this budget-
(laughing).
What this budget is, is this is a budget for operating the wastewater treatment plant, which is a very important, um, part of the, of the DPW operation, and, uh, it, it's self-supporting, and it receives its revenue from, from the fee that you see in your, in your, in your water bill. Uh, I think it's very important to note that, that they are, they're involved in not just operating the wastewater treatment plant, but many capital improvement project that Mr. Bangit is overseeing. The, um, treatment plant is operated by, uh, Mr. Rob, Bob Roland, I think he's here, I hope, or, and then under the overall supervision of Mr. Bangit. Any questions? Please ask.
Gentleman to my right.
Mark Bissel, twenty-eight Captain Litchfield Lane. Just a question, I don't see the number of, um, retained earnings for this fund. Can you provide that, please?
On the question, uh, Mr. Harris.
Nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay. And when you split out, that you said two and a half million coming from one fund, six hundred thousand from someone else, what was the second source?
Personnel services and other expenses, the day-to-day operations.
That's what it's to spend, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion from the floor, there being no one at the mics. Approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Nine. Mr. Harris.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars and transfer, and transfer from transfer station enterprise receipts the sum of one million, sixty-nine thousand, twenty-six dollars for the purposes of funding the landfill and transfer station operations and expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and thirteen as follows. Personnel services, two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars, and other expenses, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Norton. Discussion, Mr. Harris.
This enterprise fund, as we all know, exists from the fees we collect, from the, uh, purchases of the blue bags, and the fee, uh, portion, the fee portion that one drives across the scale when they dispose of construction demolition material. Monies we rece, and also monies we receive from recyclables such as cardboard, plastics, and metals.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Antonello.
Uh, this is another Department of Public Works, uh, enterprise fund. Uh, it's a, uh, I'm sure most of you have been to the transfer station. It's a, it's more or less a self-supporting operation. Uh, they sell all the recyclables and, um, and collect, um, and, and, um, um, you pay for your blue bag, which helps take care of the other trash. So, um, and the, it's run by, uh, it's under the direct supervision of, uh, Mrs. Cafferty, who's the engineering supervisor, and then Mr. Bangit, uh, the director. Thank you.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics. Approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Ten. Mr. Harris.
The Water Enterprise Fund. I move that the town transfer from available funds in the Water Enterprise receipts the sum of two million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars for the purposes of funding the Water Division operations and expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and thirteen as follows. Personnel services, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, and expenses, one million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Sir, second. Seconded, Mr. Norton. Discussion, Mr. Harris.
Similar to the, uh, Wastewater Enterprise Fund, this division of Situwa's DPW is one that we all depend on, on a daily basis, and as described in the advisory committee handbook, the Water Division and all of its employees are taking a personal interest in trying to deliver quality oil, oil, quality water, I'm sorry, for consumption as well as fire protection.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Antonello.
Uh, this Water Enterprise Fund is the, uh, is the third self-supporting operation of Department of Public Works. Um, this division provides your drinking water as well as water for fire protection. Uh, they have several projects that are in, uh, in progress right now. They're, they're detailed in the detailed explanation of the budget. Um, the, um, uh, the, the Water Division is run by, uh, James DeBarros. He's a gentleman that came up through the ranks in the department, and he, um, he passed all his exams and, and became the supervisor, and then Mr. Bangit is there, oversees the entire operation. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor, there being no one at the mics. Approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Eleven. Mr. Harris.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the difference between the levy net and the levy limit to the stabilization fund accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section five B.
Second. I declare this motion out of order for lack of a second. Article thirteen. Oh, 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 okay. I heard a second. Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Currently, we have, uh, just over three million dollars in this fund, and as we spoke about earlier, we're gonna be spending about a million dollars of this, uh, for recent storms.
From the advisory committee, Ms. Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The advisory committee voted seven to zero in favor of this article, and we recommend you approve the motion.
Discussion from the floor, there being no one at the mics. Approval of this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Twelve. Community Preservation. Uh, let's see, we have Ms. Fenton and Mr. Murray. So, Mr. Murray, why don't you offer the general motion, and then we'll go through it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this article has to deal with the dispersment of funds from the, uh, Community Preservation Act, which is-
Yes.
Which is based on, um, a, uh, surcharge on the real estate taxes, and has a certain percentage of a match provided by the state. Uh, these funds are reviewed by the communications, by the Community Preservation Committee, which is chaired by Ms. Lisa Halbaugh Fenton here behind me, and I will let her speak to more of the details of these individual projects. I'm going to make a general omnibus motion here, and with the moderator's permission and working with Ms. Fenton, we'll go through each of the seventeen, uh, line items.
Go for it.
So, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town hear and act on the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen Community Preservation Budget pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, as printed in the warrant.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Here's what we're gonna try to do with this one. Uh, you know how with the budget, we go through and ask for holds? There are seventeen different items here. The items and their funding sources are all identified, starting on page twenty-nine of the warrant. Looks like it's twenty-nine, uh, pardon me, the advisory committee report. Looks like it's on pages twenty-nine through thirty-three. Nobody's telling me I'm wrong, so I think I got that one correct. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call off each ones, one through seventeen. If you wanna have discussion on the item, or you wanna hear more about it, whatever, just say "hold," and we'll hold it, and there'll be more discussion. Uh, at the conclusion of that, we will vote any unheld items as printed in the warrant, and then, um, we'll come back and discuss the ones that were held. Is everybody clear on that? Okay. Uh, item one, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, support of community housing. Not held. Item two, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, acquisition and preservation of historic resources. Not held. Item three, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, acquisition and preservation of open space. Not held. Item four, sixty-two thousand, five hundred, for administrative expense for Community Preservation Committee. Not held. Item five, five hundred thousand for land for recreational use.
Hold.
Hold on item five. Item six, four thousand for historic resources, Union Chapel. Hold on item six. Item seven, four thousand, one hundred dollars, restoration of gravestones. Eight, uh, not held. Item number seven, not held. Eight, sixteen thousand, restoration of Lawson Tower. Not held. Item nine, restoration of- Item nine, restoration of Lighthouse Journal, twenty-seven hundred dollars. Nine, not held. Ten, thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, Little Red Schoolhouse Roof. Not held. Item eleven, fifty-five thousand dollars, Town Archive Preservation. Not held. Twelve, twelve thousand dollars, scenic road signs. Not held. Thirteen, three hundred and sixty thousand Harbor Walk Stage Two. Not held. Art, uh, number fourteen, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, Central Park Fifteen, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Sitewood High School Athletic Complex. Sixteen, not held. One, sixteen, one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, basketball court improvements. Seventeen, two hundred thousand dollars, seawall site preservation. Not held. So, to recap, items five and six were held, and I'll accept a motion to approve the unheld items as printed in the warrant. Moved by Selectman Murray, seconded by Selectman Vignani. No discussion because those items were not held. All those in favor of approving the unheld items as printed in the warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous vote. We now come to items five and six, and I think Chairman Fenton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If you don't mind, I'd like to go into just a little summary of CPC.
Oh, please do.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you all for attending tonight. This town meeting marks Sitewood's tenth year of presenting Community Preservation proposals to you, our legislative body, for your vote on how best to improve and preserve Sitewood's culture and quality of life through community preservation. As you familiarized yourself with this year's applications, and continue to do so, I'm just going to take a minute to summarize the Community Preservation Act and how it came about. The Act was signed into law in the year two thousand, as a result of nearly two decades of hard work devoted to passing legislation that would give all three hundred and fifty-one Massachusetts cities and towns a tool to preserve their most unique natural, community, and built environment in the face of rapid growth and development. While the Commonwealth enjoyed healthy growth in the period following World War Two, beginning in the nineteen eighties, communities long blessed with beneficial mix of farms and forests, historic town centers, and compact patterns of development, began to find that they were changing for the worse. Some communities wanted to protect working farms, others desired to protect historic buildings from being razed, and still others strived to provide affordable housing to enable the next generation of longtime residents to remain close to home. The concept of a statewide enabling authority to preserve community character had its original inspiration in the Nantucket Islands Land Bank of nineteen eighty-three. This managed, this, this land bank trust managed important open space resources and endangered landscapes of Nantucket Island for the enjoyment of the general public. The Land Bank was the inspiration behind the statewide Community Preservation Act, which now allows communities to create a local community preservation fund for open space protection, historic preservation, affordable housing, and outdoor recreation. Community preservation monies are raised locally through a surcharge of the tax levy against real property, and the statute also creates a statewide trust fund administered by the Department of Revenue, which provides distributions each year to communities that have adopted CPA. The trust fund has matched our surcharge at anywhere from twenty-six percent to a hundred percent in some years. Before we, the Community Preservation Committee, present proposals to you at town meeting, the committee vets all the applications against our town's master plan, and with the help of the CPA Coalition, ensures that all applications we approve meet a stringent set of guidelines set by the Commonwealth within the scope of preserving open space and historic sites, creating affordable housing, and developing outdoor recreational facilities. Lastly, it's important to keep in mind that property taxes traditionally fund the day-to-day operating needs of safety, health, schools, roads, and town maintenance. But until CPA was enacted, there was no steady funding source for preserving and improving, improving a community's character and quality of life. The Community Preservation Act has given us the opportunity to look beyond simple maintenance and focus on improvement in areas that we otherwise could not. This year, the long-awaited change in legislation regarding how recreation dollars can be spent has been approved. Beginning this year, we can use recreation dollars to renovate existing fields and playgrounds. And due to this change, you've found that our committee has focused most of our funding towards recreation this year. Thank you in advance for considering the rest of our projects we're about to discuss. Mr. Moderator?
Madam Chairman, would you take a moment and just identify the members of your committee, and if they're here, just ask them to stand, please?
Yes. This year, we've got eight members on our Community Preservation Committee. I didn't write them down, so you'll excuse me if I take a minute to remember.
So, trick quiz.
We have, yeah. Marla Manier is with us, new this year, as well as Josh McCain returns. We have George Trafton with us, as well as Frank Snow, who's always a great big help to us. Bill Limbacher, representing Planning Board. I'm on number six. Thank you. Harvey Gates. Oh, myself. And I got one more. Oh, yeah, sorry. Also new this year, sorry, folks. We have, we have a pair from the Recreation Department who've worked really hard this year, inventing a lot of, of projects through application. Dave McCary, I mean, sorry, Rob McCary and Dave Smith. Thank you very much.
Could you, would you mind giving those folks a round of applause for their work? From the advisory committee, Mr. Westward. And we will get to the holds, don't worry. Go ahead.
The advisory committee had questions on the same number as you did. Item number five actually received a majority vote, six to one in support of the article. The dissenting opinion was under the belief that CPC funds should not be used to build sidewalks and trails on town roads, and that was more of a DPW budget. The other item, item number six, actually was an opposition one, is four-three, basically. They felt that, the majority of the people felt that the use of CPC funds for a private property was not probably the best use of the funds. It really hadn't, basically, that's what it came down to. It wasn't a dollar amount, or that it was a church, it was just that it was private property and wouldn't be used by everybody. Well, I guess it could be, but...
Thank you. All right. Did you want to speak?
Do you want me to do on five and six, what we did?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Go ahead. Okay. Selectman Murray's going to present on number five, and then we'll get to the speakers.
So, for number five, the Countryway Multi-Use Trail, the board of selectmen were unanimous in support of that article. And for number six, the church windows, et cetera, the selectmen were unanimous, no, not in support of it, for many of the same reasons the advisory committee just said. It's a private property. And additionally, although it's a non-denominational church, we also had an interesting discussion about separation of church and state, whether town government should be funding a building used for religious purposes. But most of the discussion was about whether we should be funding renovations at a private property. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Just as an interesting historical footnote, probably the first one hundred town meetings took place in a congregational church, but that's just history. Oh, you, well, it's Unitarian now, it wasn't then. Got to know your history. All right. Enough of that. The, item number five, people have been waiting patiently to speak. Lady to my left.
Yes. Lisa Thompson, Forty Lad's Way. No, my only concern is I'm, I love having all these new pathways and walkways in towns, town, because I actually use them, I ride my bike all over town, but nobody seems to be maintaining them once they're built. I live very close to the one on the Drift Way, and it isn't pretty, it's okay, I mean, you can walk on it. I'm probably going to have to get my broom out and sweep it some more shortly, because it's got a lot of debris, you know, left over from the winter, but not even just this past winter. I mean, it's, I think it's, what, about three years old now, and it's not being maintained. I've asked Mr. Bangert about it, but I haven't received really a clear response as to how we're going to maintain these things once we build them.
On the question. Don't stampede the mic. Do you want to? Oh, okay. Mr. Bangert, head of DPW.
Hi, I'm Al Bangert, Director of Public Works. Sidewalks are maintained in the sense that we have snow plowing, sidewalk snowplows, so we first plow the sidewalks associated with walking to schools, and then we plow other sidewalks. There's a difficulty in the town with a lot of the older sidewalks, were built around telephone poles. We no longer do that. We only are building tele, sidewalks such that they can be maintained by mechanical equipment, such as our sidewalk plow, which also has a sidewalk broom. Currently, we're going through and brooming off all of the sidewalks onto the street so that then the street sweeper can come along and sweep those ups. But we have been bogged down with storm cleanup this year, so we're a bit behind on sidewalk cleaning.
Ma'am? Are you done?
Well, no, I just wanted to say that I know when the CPC was originally voted in, which I was very much in favor of and helped get it done, I think the CPC, it doesn't really build in maintenance money, as I recall. Is that correct? So, we do have a problem, you know, when we build these things. We have to somehow figure out, no matter what it is, whether it's the sidewalks or playing fields or whatever, that we're going to have to maintain them. So, my question is, you know, do we have the money to maintain these things once they're built? Thank you.
I guess we'll take that as a rhetorical question for the moment, but a good one. Lady to my left.
Barbara Ludlow, two-four-one Countryway. I've been a big fan of conservation ever since the committee was inaugurated, and I question their purpose in this sidewalk multi-use trail. They are in charge of protecting trees, stone walls, et cetera. Says that on the next page. I counted about a hundred trees that would be killed for this sidewalk. I counted somewhere between five and six hundred feet of ancient stone walls that would be destroyed, perhaps rebuilt, but not in the same place. But I, I really am heartbroken at the number of trees that would be gone and not replaced. My question is, how can this? My question is, how can this be a goal of the Conservation Committee, to kill trees?
On the question, Mr. Bangert?
Yes. Countryway is a scenic road. A scenic road requires, then, first of all, after an engineering firm is hired to design the sidewalk, decide on which side it should go, how to make safe crossings, how to provide handicap accessibility, and also how to minimize intrusions, then the next step is, there is a scenic road hearing and a tree hearing. And that is where the engineering firm has to address, are there any stone walls that do need to be removed, that do need to be moved, rather, and gain permission from the Planning Board to do that. So, there's a whole series of steps that have to be gone through, not just site-clearing stone walls and trees. Also, the Department of Public Works has a budget to replace trees that are removed. So, there'll be expectations where there are older trees that are removed, there'll be newer trees replacing them, newer, healthier trees, trees that are, and many times, better suited for being along our public ways. Because one of the difficulties we have is the trees that have grown up either randomly or were of a, of a style that no longer works because of intrusion into the road, tearing up driveways and that sort of thing. Any new trees that go in will be trees that are very suitable for New England conditions along streets. So, when we're done with this project, if you'll go down Stockridge Road, you'll see that's the quality of sidewalk we're talking about. It's very maintainable, it's very usable, and it's handicap accessible. And any trees or stone walls that were, had to be moved, were moved in a way that they were put back better than they were when we arrived.
Can you replace a two-hundred-year-old tree? How, how do you replace a two-hundred-year-old tree? I just think that five hundred thousand dollars would be better spent on our beaches, they're in deplorable condition, and the many other projects in town, without spending money on killing trees. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my right.
Robert Young, thirty-three Branch Street. Just a personal observation, I have noticed very few bicycles on the bicycle trails that we've already built, and I question the wisdom of spending a half a million dollars more to add, add more trails.
Gentlemen to my right.
Alan Greenberg, one-twenty-two Old Oak and Bucket Road. In the past, I was a member, a long time ago, on the Community Preservation Committee, and in the past, as a member of conservation, I was involved in developing several projects. My understanding is that the organization or group who presented the project and for whom the project was approved is responsible for maintaining the project once it's completed, not, in some cases, that may be the town, but in other cases, it's other organizations or boards. And as, my understanding is that at least some of them are doing that job.
Gentlemen to the center, Mike.
Good evening. Mike DeMayo, thirty-three Old Cross Road. This article benefits many residents in town, I feel. It'll provide safe access for pedestrians, joggers, walkers, bikers, and school kids. Countryway is a very busy artery in town, coupled with limited lighting and blind spots. Public safety should not be compromised. I would urge approval of this article.
Gentlemen to my right.
My name is Joe Shimada, I live at two-eleven Countryway. I am not opposed to having a sidewalk put up Countryway as a resident. I see how fast cars go and how dangerous it is for children, dangerous it is for children, both walking and, and riding their bikes. I have two small children myself, and I think this would be a safe alternative to playing or walking or riding on the road. However, I feel slighted because I feel that a lot of work has been done by the CPC without notifying anyone on my side of the street. I've spoken to a bunch of residents, have also received and, and replied to at least ten emails from residents, again, on my side of the street, that are not necessarily opposed. However, we feel like we are, we have been slighted because no one has discussed any of this sidewalk proposal with us. It's going on in front of my house, and none of you live on Countryway either. So, I'm just slightly disappointed, and I wonder why it is that we weren't notified that this project might be going through.
Ms. Fenton for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, I'd like to address Ms. Ludlow, and I, I absolutely empathize with your, your comments about the trees. Do know that when the committee makes decisions with how to apply Community Preservation Funds, there's often a trade-off, and hopefully, we make a decision for the best. But this particular trail, and I hope this addresses some of the other comments as well, this multi-use trail is part of a, a much bigger program that Community Preservation, as well as some of the other boards in town, are supporting with regards to creating non-motorized transit opportunity around town. We're developing, and we have been for the last five years, a route called the Grand Loop that will eventually be able to connect very important destinations that you'll be able to get to either on foot, or by bicycle, or with a stroller, destinations such as the beaches, the downtown business districts, some of our historic... districts, some of our historical sites, as well as just an ability to circumnavigate the town without using your automobile. So, within our responsibility as Community Preservation Committee, we're looking for opportunities in which to preserve the character and the culture of town. We feel that maintaining its walkability is one of those characters, and we hope that you'll agree. With regard to the bicycles, I have to disagree with not seeing bicycles on many of the trails. I see not just bicycles going from the harbor down the Driftway Trail to the train. I see bicycles on many of the other multi-use trails now that go from one destination to another, often leading into the business districts, not just bicycles, kids on bikes, adults on bikes, commuters on bikes, but I also see moms with strollers. We see often family members wheeling senior citizens from some of the life care homes on the Driftway, taking their relatives down to the marina to take a look at the marsh from the bridge there on the marina, on the Driftway Marina. So, we have been seeing much increased non-motorized traffic on these trails, and we hope that continues.
Lady at the center, Mike.
PM Chauvin, 89 Stockbridge Road, and I'm more or less going to reiterate a few things Lisa just said, because I don't think I've ever driven down the Driftway in all kinds of weather that I haven't seen someone biking, walking. And I have another question as well, is what happened to the rest of the Stockbridge Road sidewalk, which I also see being used quite a bit?
Ms. Fenton on the question.
Mr. Moderator, I'll ask Mr. Bangert to discuss the Stockbridge Road.
Mr. Bangert.
That's a, that was funded with Streetscape's money from the MBTA. What we try to do is look for, there's a, there was a sidewalk study done that prioritized where sidewalks should go to connect gaps in our walking routes around town. Stockbridge Road received funding from the MBTA grant for a portion of it. The rest of the money is not available yet. We are looking for grants. We've received a grant up in the Holid area for safe routes to school. We received a CPA grant for a sidewalk up along Gannett Road. We're looking for a CPA grant for this sidewalk started down Country Way. No sidewalk has been forgotten, no sidewalk will stay unfinished. It's just a matter of finding funding for those.
Gentleman to my right.
Matt Buckley, 191 Country Way. I'm pro-sidewalk as well, but I'm just wondering on the logic on having it on the odd side instead of the even side. These places listed here are all on the even side of the road.
Question is, why the odd side and not the even side?
Maybe I missed that one.
Did I get that right, Mr. Buckley?
You got it.
Okay. Al? Now, what'd you do, buck up or something, you know?
I apologize. I was talking to my wife. Why the odd side, even side? That actually hasn't been determined. That's why we would hire an engineering firm. The way this is set up is that the Department of Public Works is going to fund the cost of the engineering, and then we would complete a portion of that sidewalk as far as it would go with the money remaining for construction. It won't go all the way to Green Bush. It'll probably go about halfway to Huey. Looking at the road as a, I'm not a professional engineer, but I've done this for a little bit, it appears to me that the side of the road that is, if you're heading from Green Bush going north, the telephone poles are all on the right-hand side. There are a few poles on the left-hand side, but they're just what are called guy poles. So, it's a very expensive proposition to try to move telephone poles or utility poles. So, the project, again, as a layman looking at it, or as a DPW guy looking at it, along that side of the road, I think that you're referring to, does the odd side, the odd-numbered side? Yes, okay. There's plenty of scope in there for a five-to-six-foot sidewalk without intruding on anyone's property. There is one or two difficult areas where there's a slope gradient problem to work with, but that's, would be, that would be in part two. That particular side, the side with the odd numbers, has enough scope to accommodate the width of the sidewalk without interfering with people's properties or intruding into the road excessively. One thing happens that when you put a sidewalk in with a granite curb, it tends to slow down traffic, so there's a traffic calming that comes with a sidewalk, which is, I think is an advantage to all of us. There are people walking on Country Way today. It's a very dangerous situation for them. Putting in this walkway will, I think, improve the safety for them as well as slow down cars, provide a nice amenity for the residents in that area, and connect two important parts of Situate.
Gentleman to my left.
David Vosarica, 199 Country Way. I'd just expand a little bit upon those current comments. The, I believe that currently the town property goes in three feet from the road. This is a six-foot sidewalk, so does it go, is it going three feet into the shoulder and three feet into the property? How much would actually encroach on private property? You're saying that most of it would not, so does that go into the, encroach on the shoulder a bit? Is that how it would work? Six-foot sidewalk, three feet is town property?
It's, it's, it's very likely not to be six feet.
Okay.
It has to be engineered. Once we have it engineered, we'll know what do we need for the street, and what can we use for the sidewalk or trail. There'll be some times when it may go down to as little as three feet to get around obstructions. It will, but one thing I can tell you is it will not intrude on private properties, nor will it be designed in any way that it interferes with a safe flow of traffic. So, we have gone out for proposals. We've received three proposals from three engineering firms. We're prepared tomorrow to initiate an engineering firm to begin engineering the project with DPW money, and then, starting in the summer, well, when the engineering is done, then there'll be, residents along the way will all be invited in to come and see at what's called the 25-point point, see what it looks like, make adjustments. That's my grandmother's favorite thing there. We need to move around it. We were very successful on the Stockbridge Road and the granite, a Gannett Road sidewalks, in terms of involving neighbors and abutters in this whole process, so that there's, there'll be nothing unknown about it by the time that construction vehicles show up, perhaps late in the fall or early next spring.
Thank you. I just want to make the comment that I am very much in favor of the sidewalks. I've seen kids in very dangerous situations, especially when the snow falls and the streets are unplowed. They're walking almost in the middle of the road with cars that can buy, so, thank you.
Gentleman to the center, Mike.
William Ludlow, 241 Country Way. I have a comment and a couple of questions. The comment is, I understand looking at a sidewalk for a cost basis, and I understand moving telephone poles are very expensive. But from my observation, going down the totality of Country Way from First Parish to Green Bush, I have a feeling that most of the children, and I think that's our primary concern for safety, most of the children live on the streets that intersect on the even side of the street. It's a major street, it's a lot of children. If they're going to access the sidewalk, that would mean if it's on the right-hand side or the odd side of the street, they're going to have to cross Country Way to get there. And I don't think having a lot of children crossing Country Way to get to a sidewalk is necessarily the best idea in the world. That's just a comment. The question is, we're having an engineering study done. I'd like to know what involvement the abutters will have to whatever side of the sidewalk this goes on once the engineering study is complete. And the second question I have is, who has the liability of keeping those sidewalks clear in the wintertime? Thank you.
Mr. Bangert solely on the questions.
Okay, yes. I'll answer the second question first. The town is responsible for, has the liability for the sidewalk. The sidewalk is on town property. Any incidents that occur are at the town's liability. Also, the town is liable for maintaining them, plowing them, that sort of thing. The first question you asked was, when would public meetings be? What would happen is, we would, we hire an engineering firm. That engineering firm goes out and surveys everything from one end to the other. In fact, what we do is we're engineering it from one end to the other, so we don't end up building half a sidewalk and finding out, whoops. At every place where there's a crossing street, there'll be installed, I don't want to say high-tech crosswalk, but the crosswalks-
Well, Mr. Bangert, I think the question was, what, what community outreach will it be with the abutters in terms of-
Okay. All the abutters will be invited to, once the engineering gets to the 25-point point, which is conceptually laid out, okay, not down to the final detail of how deep will the gravel be underneath it, but at the 25-point point, all of the property owners along the way are written a letter and said, "Come in to a meeting at the GAR Hall usually", where we go through what the project looks like, lay it out. The abutters look at, the property owners look at their specific property, and the engineer will make an appointment to come out to your property and meet with you and understand better what is the concern that you have, or explain it to you in more detail. This is how we did it on two other areas. We had success in dealing with the residents doing that, and they were happy.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Alma Morris, 22 Tinknick Court. I move the question.[1292.32][1292.32](APPLAUSE)
Motion to move the question is not debatable. Is there a second? There is a second, multiple seconds. May not be debated. Requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote terminates all debate on the motion, and then we go strictly to a vote on whether to approve the $500,000 or not. All those in favor of moving the question on item five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a majority. That brings us to the question. Just for the sake of clarity and the record, is there a motion to approve item five as printed in the warrant? Moved by Mr. Danhee, seconded by Mr. Vignani. We now come to the question. Yes vote means you approve it, no vote means you do not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a majority. Held item number six, $4,000 preservation of Union Chapel. Ms. Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The two reasons the committee heard in opposition to funding the chapel, the chapel's application are, the first was the church and state dynamic, and the second was the use of public funds for privately-owned buildings. It's our responsibility as stewards of community preservation expenditures to research details such as these with subject matter experts with the Massachusetts Community Preservation Coalition. We have been reassured that protections are in place within the coalition laws in the form of historic restrictions that address any potential issues that can arise when funding restoration of privately-owned buildings. It's also important to note that we funded other applications such as this, and we've had nothing but success. Lastly, the coalition reassures us that historic, that a historic building's eligibility for CPA funds is solely based on its historic significance, and the church and state dynamic has no bearing on historic preservation eligibility. The chapel itself, just so that you know, is owned by the congregation, and this congregation has been very active since 1885, when the chapel was built. Back a long time ago, there was formed a dorca society, which was made up of women in the neighborhood, and they had run spring and Christmas sales and rummage sales to help take care of expenses. And I'm reading from old church records from the Daughters of American Revolution in 1921. Back then, they talked about that this chapel will be 100 years old in 1985, and it was built by the people who lived around Sherman's Corner because transportation was so difficult to get to the other churches in Situate. No one could belong to it then unless they were members of another church. Back then, it was non-sectarian and welcomed everyone, and it still is, and it's, back then, it is also, it says, "It is the only church around that is non-sectarian. It has been maintained by free-will offerings and has never owed anyone anything." And in addition to these rummage sales and Christmas sales that allowed them to acquire revenues, recently, the congregation has diligently pursued other funding sources to support the chapel, such as four Eagle Scout projects, including their wheelchair ramp, and other funds for the building of a composting, a composting toilet. So, we hope you agree that the antique glass windows of this beautiful building can be preserved and protected with CPA funds. Thank you.
Rick, do you, Rick and Mike, do you guys want to make separate recommendations? You all said, like, you're good, okay. Gentleman to my left.
Michael Hayes, 35 Allen Place.
Mr. Hayes.
I think this is one of those opportunities where town meeting has to tell the selectmen and the advisory board that it's time to do the right thing on this. I was at the public hearing, at the selectmen's meeting. The proponents from the chapel stated that their congregation is getting smaller and older by the year, and that congregation is not going to be around forever, and that more than likely, at some point, this building would be more eligible to be, become part of the town's property. Be that as it may, it's a, it's a small sum, it's a reasonable sum. It is a non-denominational chapel. It is open to the public. It is open for use by anybody to do anything. It is a beautiful old building. The separation of church and state, I don't think is, is an appropriate argument against funding this small thing. You go to any public university in the country, they have non-denominational chapels that are funded by public funds. There is a chapel, I believe, in the State House in Boston, supported by public funds. So, I think it's just up to town meeting to do, to do the right thing here, and I would urge that the town meeting support this.[1643.40][1643.40](APPLAUSE)
Gentleman to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Bullman, 72 Old Forge Road. And again, it's hard to follow up with what Mr. Hayes said, but first of all, this is about preserving a historic structure which may well be part of an asset of the Historical Commission, the Historical Society at some point. I don't know if town meeting is really aware, but the Historical Society properties aren't owned by the town of Situate. They're owned by a nonprofit entity, much like the congregation. In these properties, we've spent hundreds of thousands, probably millions, preserving them, and they're not owned by the town of Situate, yet they're open to the public. They're restricted because they've used CPC funds, as will the chapel have a historical restriction on it. So, you know, it's about preserving a beautiful historic building. It's an appropriate use of funds. There is no church or state separation issue. That's, that's very clear. So, I would urge the meeting to approve the article.
What he said.
All right, there being no one else at the microphones? Nancy, you had your chance. Okay, there being no one else at the microphones, I'll accept a motion to approve item six as printed in the warrant. Okay. Thank you. After all, that debate, I mean, I hate to bang the gavel. All right, all those in favor of approving item six in the war, as printed in the warrant signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a majority vote. That concludes action on article 12. Article 13, on the motion.
Selectmen Murray. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, article 13 is to reconcile budgets from past expenditures from the Community Preservation Act Committee. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town rescind the balance of funds authorized but unexpended from prior community preservation projects totaling $45,644.43, and transfer said funds into the Community Preservation Committee general fund balance or reserve fund balance from which they were originally appropriate, as the case may be, in accordance with the community preservation-
Community Preservation Act as follows. And these dollar values are a little different from what's in your book, but not substantively.
Go ahead and read them out.
Yes. Historic survey, $18,000 from 2008, Article 19. The Ellis House National Register, $50, 2009, Article 15. Lawson Gates Restoration, $205 from 2011, Article 17.8. Gates School Feasibility Study, $8,505 from 2011, Article 17.10. Situate Lighthouse Repairs, $8,884.43, 2011, Article 17.13. And the 375th Anniversary Publication, $10,000 from 2011, Article 1712.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, selectmen Murray.
The Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to support this article. What this is, is as you just saw in the previous article, we allocate, or town meeting allocates certain amount of funding to do certain projects, and those dollar values are in not-to-exceed terms. So when the actual project is finished and done and signed off on, sometimes the cost comes in less, and those dollars are still hanging out in the budget sheets, but they're unexpended, the project is all done. So all this article is doing is for these six projects, it's reconciling the budgets, cleaning up the sheets, and closing out the accounts.
For the advisory committee, Mr. Westhor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the advisory committee, we like it when people refund money, so as you might imagine, we have approved this article. The two changes were for marine park landscaping in the town archives. Basically, they're probably, they're bookkeeping left to settle out before, let's hope they refund some money as well. And that's it. Advisory committee voted 7-0 in approval.
For the CPC, Chairman Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We approved it too.[728.04][728.04](LAUGHING).
It's to the point. Discussion. There being no one at the microphones, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 14.
Mr. Moderator.
Hmm?
Miss Center.
Ah, yes. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to advance article 27, to push that up behind article 14, so that we can discuss both articles in 14 and 27 as they apply to the meals tax.
Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. I'll explain to the meeting what the, what the purpose of the motion is. Articles 14 and 27 have very similar content, they're going to present substantively the same issues. The maker of the motion has suggested that we advance consideration of article 27 so that articles 14 and 27 can be discussed together. After, at a certain point, we'll make appropriate motions to clear up whatever the result of the debate is. So, is there any discussion on the motion to advance consideration of article 27 to be discussed with article 14? No one is at the microphones. Although, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of advancing consideration of article 27 to be discussed with article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Articles 14 and 27 are both ripe for motions and discussion.
So, should I make a motion for article 14, Mr.?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town accept the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, authorizing a local meals tax, and further that the Board of Selectmen endeavor to allocate these funds to include, but not be limited to, capital and economic development costs as it deems necessary or as the best use of said funds.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, Mr. Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is, is a little bit confusing, so I'll, I'm going to discuss initially just the act of starting a meals tax. And then there's different components between the two. There's a citizen petition that's been made also, which is essentially from the Economic Development Committee, for other uses of those funds. But initially, I'll start with the meals tax itself. For the last three years, the Board of Selectmen have considered implementing a meals tax, but due to the economic condition of the town and overrides and all this sort of stuff, we've chosen not to proceed with it. And this year, we have. And as well as about a half of the communities in the, in the state are proceeding with implementing a meals tax. The meals tax would bring about $200,000 to the town. It would be in the, it would be in the amount of an additional 75 cents on a $100 bill at a restaurant, at a local restaurant. And again, like I said, it will bring about $200,000 into the town. The, a good portion of this money would be coming from non-residents, as other people come to the town and they eat here. As you know, there are very few alternative revenue streams that come to the town, and this is one that we can take advantage of, and this is one that the state has put in place so that we can take advantage of it. And we believe that these funds should not be used for an operating budget, so this is not a set of money that should just go in and be incorporated into departmental budgets. So this isn't going to pay for copy paper, this isn't going to pay for, you know, other sorts of electric bills or what have you. This is going to go for capital plan, capital issues, which we're leaning towards this master plan that we've put before the town now, for seawall type repairment, and of course, the economic development that we're trying to foster in the town. So that is my communication about implementing a meals tax, which I think the other group is, is looking to do as well. I think, do we want to discuss the difference between the two options now, or do we want to, how do you want to proceed?
Okay. Let me try to, as I understand, let me try to outline to the meeting what's going on. Article 14 just proposes to accept this Chapter 64L, which authorizes a local meals tax. The proponents of article 14 and the proponents of article 27 agree on that much, correct? Okay. So, what, what the proponents of article 27 also wish to do on top of this acceptance is to create a special stabilization fund, correct? Okay? And to have a motion that suggests a possible use for the funds that would come in as a result of this acceptance. So what I'm going to do at this time is I'm going to limit the discussion and debate solely to the question of whether we should accept this statute or not. From the advisory committee, Ms. Dayley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. From the advisory committee's standpoint, we are in favor of accepting this meals tax, and we voted 4 and 2 in support of moving this motion and approving this article.
All right, discussion. Solely on the question of whether the town should accept Chapter 64L, Section 2A. Gentlemen to my left.
Thank you. Michael Hayes, 35 Allen Place. I'm not in favor of either one of these articles. There used to be a curly-haired gentleman with glasses at the center microphone who would remind town meeting every year that more is never enough. If there's ever been a, a article that I think underscores that argument, this is it. I've been a member of the school committee for a long time, I have supported tax increases, I have supported and worked very hard to get every override that's been passed in this town passed. It's not that I'm afraid of raising money. However, this is not a need, this is just a want, and where I think it's being brought in front of town hall, town meeting, just because it can be, not because we need it. We spent a good hour here tonight, justifiably saying what a well-run town we have, and we do, and that things are pretty good in Situate. And they are. I think this is a slap in the face to the taxpayers of Situate. Everybody in this room has had their taxes increased this year by the federal government. The state legislator is fighting with the governor on whether we should raise taxes by a half a billion or $2 billion. We're coming off an override, we're looking in the not-too-distant future for a big, big override. The town right now sends money, large sums of money, into our stabilization funds and rainy day funds. We can't, we're not spending the money we're raising now. You know, the argument that other towns are doing it, other cities are doing it, I just think we should go back to the advice our parents gave us when we went to high school, and is that if your kid, your friends are going to cut their heads off, doesn't mean it's a good idea. Finally, I would just say that-
Now, work for the crowd first.
The argument is also that this is just a small amount of money. It's a small amount of money. Well, there are two proverbs, I think, that are apt when discussing the small amount of money that is going to be raised here. And one is, it's the straw that breaks the camel's back, and the other is, deft by a thousand knives, is just as potent as being killed with a machete. So I would urge town meeting to say, not now, this isn't the time. If we need it in the future, if times get real tough again, I'd be in favor of raising money. However, I just don't think this is the time to do it. Thank you.[1272.58][1272.58](APPLAUSE).
Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Larry Howell, Orland Road, Situate. Just a point of information, would this statute allow for all retail sales to be taxed, not just meals, within the town limits?
To answer the question, Mr. Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. No, it's not, it's just meals tax. So it's not all retail sales, it's just meals from the, the restaurant establishments in town.
Gentlemen to my right.
Mark Bissell, Captain Daniel Litchfield. I'm curious, with the dissenting opinions on the advisory board, can we hear the, the two folks who dissented and the one who didn't vote on what their view was? They've obviously spent a lot of time looking at the issue, love to hear their point of view on that.
The members of the advisory committee who dissented if they wish.
I can speak that I wasn't present at that meeting, so I did not vote on this article.
I did vote in opposition, but it was in the context of how the money would be spent, not in the sense of just raising the tax. So I think we're doing two parts. So I was in favor of the meals tax itself.
I was in favor of the meals tax as well, I just voted, I didn't think you could vote on two meals tax, I didn't think it was appropriate. I wanted to figure out where they were going to allocate the funds, so I voted for the second one.
Thank you.
Gentlemen to my left.
Bernie Westerveld, Harborview Road.
Sir.
I have been reading on the meals tax in the Situate Mariner. As far as I saw, the town doesn't even know what to spend the money on. So let's vote no until we know what we're going to spend the money on.
I'm going to allow, I'm going to allow Mr. Vignani to address your question.
I, I just repeat in the motion that there are definitely things that the town needs to, to spend the money on, and we mentioned a few of them. Economic development, which the town started a committee just a few years ago, our seawall repairs and the issues with that, and also, we have a huge capital plan coming down, which as Mr. Hayes brought up, is going to be, involve a big override, and this could help subsidize some of that as well. So those are the initiatives that the, that the Board of Selectmen want to see this, these funds go to, to help, you know, help deal with the costs of that. It will not go to just roll into a budget and be eaten up, you know, by departmental stuff.
Lady to my left.
Lisa Fenton, 25 Crescent Ave. To address Mr. Hayes' point, as well as a couple of others, I tune against a meals tax just to raise another tax. Well, I first learned about the meals tax when the Economic Development Committee sent out the Survey Monkey, asking about different potential opportunities in order to raise money for an economic development fund that would then be used to reinvest in the community. Of course, at the time, they didn't have enough money to do that, they were looking for ways to raise funds. So they floated the idea of a meals tax. It's a very, very minimal tax, as you'd mentioned, it was, it's 75 cents on a $100 bill. So it will bring in somewhere around $200,000 a year. That's not a great deal of money. It's certainly not the kind of money you need to repair a seawall, and it's certainly just a tiny bit of a shred when you're talking about the type of master plan that we're looking forward to. But what it is, is enough of a revenue to be able to reinvest in the town, so that you could start to apply, just like you would with community preservation applications, apply, create proposals of ideas that would help generate revenue for the town. So as opposed to just raising a meals tax to have more money, I think the original intention from economic development was to create a meals tax in order to use those revenues to reinvest in the town, to be able to generate new revenue. Thank you.[1538.83][1538.83](APPLAUSE).
Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
I'm Dan Monger, 5 Captain Daniel Litchfield. I'm current vice chairman of the planning board, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the planning board. I'm also one of the petitioners on article 27. Mr. Moderator, I know you directed us to limit the discussion to just whether or not to pass the meals tax, but our group on article 27, we do not support just passing the meals tax without the second part of our article.
Well, Mr. Monger, I'll tell you what. Since some of the previous speakers have said that they weren't prepared to, to vote on the question until they had a better idea of why the money was going to be used, I'm going to relax the discussion a little bit, and if people want to talk about how the money would be used, that's fine, but, well, go ahead.
I mean, my preference would be to allow Mr. McConaughey to come to the podium and present what exactly our article does, just so you can see the comparison.
All right. I'll allow that.
So ladies and gentlemen, I'm Chris McConaughey, 3 Linden Avenue. I am one of the authors of article 27, one of the citizens who authored this article. I'm also the chairman of the Economic Development Commission. I want to make clear that article 27 is actually a citizen-sponsored petition. It was not sponsored by the Economic Development Commission, though it is supported by the Economic Development Commission. The, the article as written for article 27 reads as follows. To see if the town will vote to A, accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 64L, Section 2A, authorizing the imposition of a local excise tax in the statutory amount of 0.75% on the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town, with the intention that annual revenues from said tax be placed into a new economic development stabilization fund described below. And B, establish a new stabilization fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B, to be known as the Economic Development Stabilization Fund, for the purpose of furthering the goals and mission of the Situate Economic Development Commission, including but not limited to, providing funding for the planning and construction of infrastructure and other improvements benefiting the town's business districts, potential expansion of and creation of new business districts, helping to stabilize residential property taxes, outreach programs and incentives for new business to locate in Situate, or existing businesses to expand in Situate, funding of market research and planning, outreach and advertising for Situate businesses, and coordinated marketing efforts and events. So, the, a little bit of the background behind why creating an economic stabilization fund, I think, between article 27 and article 14, which is sponsored by the board, we feel that a great deal of value can be generated from a meals tax. The question is how to, how to realize that value. The concern from a number of citizens who are behind article 27 is that, yeah, in some ways, $200,000 may sound like a lot of incremental revenue, in other ways, it does not. When you, you look at the tens of millions of dollars of potential repairs needed for our seawalls on a long-term basis, when you consider the multi-tens of millions of dollars potentially facing Situate for the facilities master plan that's being considered, which involves potentially new middle school, new town hall, new police and fire facilities, $200,000 is not significant. Our concern is that- Our concern is that if we create or pass a local meals tax without any real earmarks, and the Article 14, while there is a clear intention to apply it in some specific areas, there is nothing procedurally mandating that those funds be spent in those areas. What we are trying to do with economic stabiliz, with creating a fund, is to, is to ensure that $200,000 is used in the most effective means possible. So if we take $200,000 and we, we slough off $50,000 over here and $50,000 over there, our concern is that none of us in town will actually feel the benefit of that incremental revenue. We won't see the benefit of that incremental revenue. It'll be going in places where, you know, $200,000 or less ends up being a rounding error to the cost required for seawall maintenance, the cost required for major facilities improvements. So I don't want to suggest that $200,000 is going to solve our economic development issues either, but the fact is that 30 years ago, 1982, the percentage of commercial tax revenue in Situate was 10.5%. It is 4.6% today, and that represents a 30-year decline. So basically, all of us as residents are basically footing all of the costs associated with Situate. And one of the speakers mentioned that, you know, there's money that we don't know what to do with. I disagree with that. The only vehicle that we've had to generate incremental revenue has really been overrides. That's going out to the townspeople and asking all of you to foot the bill for incremental expenditures above and beyond what we can handle.
One minute.
Thank you. So, again, so the intention here is to use any revenue generated by a meals tax as seed money for investment into the kinds of things that can, over time, begin to rebuild our commercial tax base, from what is by far the lowest commercial tax rate on the South Shore at 4.6% to something that could maybe begin to offset some of the costs that we're all paying as, as residents.
I'm gonna let Mr. Monger finish his remarks, and then I'm gonna give some clarifying instructions to the meeting. Go ahead, sir.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Moderator. As, as Chris stated, you know, I guess we started down this path about three years ago. I personally did, when lack of funds in town caused my son's classroom size to go from 22 to 30 students, and he suffered significantly, and that was the first time I personally started paying attention to town finances. You know, I got together with a group of my friends, we looked through town finances, and looked at the revenue sources, and as stated, the vast majority of all revenues for the town come from property taxes. Roughly 80% of every, every revenue the town sees comes from property taxes. That's why each time there's a new expenditure, we've gotta go back for overrides. At the same time, that was, you know, I learned that the state was cutting funds, and those continue to be in decline. So I then looked at what's the makeup of our property tax base in town compared to other towns, looked at Cohasset, Norwell, Hingham, all the towns around us, was shocked to see that we had by far the lowest commercial property tax base of any town I could even find. I don't know if there's others in the state that are as low as this. Now, we do understand that Situate has some geographic limitations, we're not on a main highway, you know, we took that into consideration, but we looked at, for example, what Cohasset has done. Cohasset has doubled the per capita commercial tax base as Situate, and basically the same geographic restrictions. So that led us to push for forming an Economic Development Commission, which has now been around for almost three years now. They looked at a lot of different things we could do for the town. There's also studies for the town that were done in 2002, 2003, on enhancing Green Bush, the harbor, North Situate, there's an economic development section of the master plan. A lot of this has been studied, it hasn't been funded, and we looked at the statistics going back 30-plus years, and the town has been in a steady decline. You know, there was a housing boom in the 80s and 90s, but the commercial pace did not keep up with it. So there are things we can do. We've, we interviewed along with the selectmen, once the selectmen agreed to reinstate the Economic Development Commission, and to their credit, I know they think that's a very important piece of this. I think it's, the difference is, you know, our group proposed the meals tax specifically for economic development. We specifically opposed passing it for it just to go into the general fund. We think it'll just disappear, and the ultimate goal of using this money is to actually stabilize the residential tax base and give relief to the residential taxpayers. The only way possible right now to do that is to increase our commercial tax base. We're not gonna get more money from the state, there aren't other revenue sources out there. Other towns, if you've seen around us, have been aggressively doing this for years now.
One minute.
You look at Hingham, Marshfield, Quincy has a huge project going on, but there's no funds, and we feel like unless you take this new revenue source earmarked for investment, it's gonna be gone. And I think we're at a, you know, a really, a great turning point for the town right now. We could do something very significant that could have long-lasting effects for the town in the years to come. You look at towns like Rockport, Newburyport, places like that, that, you know, have thriving economic bases that are similarly situated to Situate. We have all the ingredients here, we don't have the funding. This is a long-term plan versus, you know, short-term, take the meals tax and just have it disappear. This is a long-term financial plan for the town, and hopefully some of you read the article that Chris wrote in the, in the Mariner that explains all this, but our group, we think it's critically important, the Economic Development Commission thinks it's critically important, and I would urge all of you to please support it.
All right, before I get to Mrs. Dorsey and Mr. Ball and Ms. Manier, let me just make a few clarifying remarks. It seems like I let the genie out of the bottle a little bit in getting into a discussion about how the money would be used before you've even voted to, whether or not to accept the statute. Well, I did that for a reason. It's because several speakers wanted to know if you accepted the statute, how the money might be used. You heard Mr. Vignani give an explanation, you heard the petitioners give an explanation. That part of the discussion is now over. The only question in front of the body at the moment, and this is my ruling, is whether or not to accept Chapter 64L, Section 2A, authorizing the imposition of a local excise tax in the statutory amount of .75% on the sale of restaurant meals originating with, in town. That's the only question that's now, that's the only question that's now going to be in front of you. If you vote favorable action on that, then the next question to be decided is whether you will vote pursuant to the petitioner's article to accept chapter, a provision of Chapter 40, Section 5B, creating an economic, an economic development stabilization fund. But that's not what's in front of you right now. The purpose, how this money would be used is not in front of you right now, it's just a question of whether you wanna impose this tax. So, with that ruling, I believe Ms. Manier, or I should say, the lady to my left, has the microphone.
Marla Manier, 29 Christopher Lane. I rose to the microphone because I heard people saying that the town is well-run, which I think it is well-run, and they didn't know what we'd spent the money for, but I would like to remind this meeting that when the capital plan was presented, it was stated that there were $70 million in capital requests, and certainly what was brought to the meeting was nowhere near $70 million. So I just want to say that there are many, many needs to this town, infrastructure, capital, and I certainly do support a meals tax. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my right.
David Ball, 44 Rebecca Road. I, I agree with the former speaker also, there were $70 million worth of capital requests that were made to the town, and we're not coming even close to approaching that amount of money. I'm, as, as many people know, have been advocating for seawall repair funds, and a lot of you received tonight a brochure from the Situate Coastal Coalition. There's a lot of need out there, there's a lot of need for seawall repairs, there's a lot of need for water line repairs. Though I, I can buy into the selectmen's Article, Article 14, without any, any problem. But to, to, for me to, to say, okay, I'm gonna vote for Article 27 and put $200,000 into a pot that's gonna end up probably for a lot of studies for the next four or five years, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote for that. Thank you.
Professor at the center, Mike.
Michelle Dorsey, 79 Kenneth Road. I just want to inject what I hope is a little common sense here. We have the opportunity to make some money off people who come to Situate, we just paid for their internet, their wireless capacity, we're talking about, they all love our little town. It's not just us that buy the meals, it's them, and we should be getting some money out of that. So I think it makes absolute common sense to do this. We, we may be well-run, but we don't have enough money to do the things we need to do, and we can figure out how to use the money later, but for now, I say, if you have $100 to throw at a meal, you have 75 cents, you can throw it to the town of Situate.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Alma Morrison at 22 Tichner Court. With due respect, Mr. Moderator, the way I understand you've divided the two articles...
Yes.
It seems to me that if I wanted to vote against the first one, Article 14, but for Article 27, I don't really have that chance, unless you, unless you rule it that way. Because by separating the two questions, if, if people vote for the meals tax to accept the state statute, but then go on to the second one without having another chance to accept it, if they vote it down the first time, we aren't doing what the, what seems to me the straightforward way of doing it, with the two articles separate.
In my own defense, I'll just say, you voted on the motion. But, okay, be that as it may. Now, there, there is a logic to doing it this way, and here's the logic. Both articles seek to accept the tax statute, and all you're considering right now is, do you accept the statute, or don't you? No, wait. Subsequently, the petitioners wish to have you create a new stabilization fund into which proceeds might someday in future, from this tax be placed. Nothing that can happen tonight, if that fund is created, nothing that can happen tonight would place this tax money into that fund. If you accept this tax statute tonight, and money comes in, nothing you do tonight will spend it on seawalls, sidewalks, infrastructure, fire trucks, anything, because the money that would come in from the acceptance of this statute has to go before you again for appropriation at a subsequent town meeting. So, in truth, talking about how the money will be spent, that's a discussion that's going to happen at a future town meeting. There's nothing you could do tonight that's gonna commit the money to any purpose. So really, the only question that you have is, right now, do you want to accept this statute, or don't you? And then if you accept the statute, do you wanna create this economic development stabilization fund? Then if you create that fund, the money that will come in from the tax revenue doesn't automatically go into that fund, that money has to come to town meeting, and then at a subsequent town meeting, if you wanna vote that money into that fund, you can do that by two-thirds vote. I hope that helps. So, the question is, do we accept the statute, or don't we? The next speaker is, let's see, this gentleman, Mr. Monger has already spoken, so we're going to go through people who haven't spoken yet, sir.
Colin McNeese, 8 Dunbar Lane. I'm also the vice chairman of the Economic Development Commission, speaking as a resident tonight. I just wanted to follow up on two points. One, there's money to be had, and there's been statements made that we should capture it. I think the key to that is that if we're going to ask patrons of our businesses to come to our community and spend their money, and we're gonna tax them for it, there should be a nexus to what we spend that money on, and it should go into an economic development fund, so that we can reinvest that and make use of that, that revenue. There've been a lot of statements about not spending that simply on plans. Our concern, as we've looked at these monies and funding sources, is we've got all sorts of plans, and we'd like to actually implement them. There are plans that were done 10 years ago, five years ago, six years ago, they're good ideas, and we'd actually make them happen. We don't need to do anymore, we have them, but we don't have any resources to move them, and this is one avenue that would do it. And Mr. Moderator, just as a point of clarification, you say if we vote tonight to accept the statute, then we have a meals tax. And I understand the point, we have to fund it at a later date, but we still have to establish the fund, and my view would be...
No, I'm gonna...
Is that correct?
No, that, that is incorrect. And, and I am gonna start tightening up the debate, because as I have ruled, I think the discussion now about how the money will be used...
That's fine.
...is no longer in order. The only question is, do you accept this statute, or don't you? I let the genie out of the bottle to let people talk a bit how it might be used, but the discussion as to how it will be used, if this is accepted, will come before this town meeting at a future date, regardless of whether you create this enterprise fund or not.
Right, but as a procedural matter to fund, do you have to have the stabilization fund created first?
No.
So we can do both later?
Yes.
So if I, if I don't support a meals tax, would Alex, the editor, send a statement? If you, you could vote the economic stabilization fund without supporting the meals tax? You could vote the, the acceptance of the statute and not accept the, this fund that you want to create. Right now, the only question is, do you accept this statute, or don't you? That's the question.
Lady at the center.
26 Flatwell. I guess this is a point of order as much as anything else, but 27 is a non-binding citizen's petition, as I understand it, so even if we could not vote together, if we had voted the original selectmen's meals tax and discussed 27 later, it would still be non-binding, it is a, it is an opinion. So it's not the most established anything. It's, it's advisory, is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, I thought that was considered as non-binding.
So, yes, you, you did leave that in the advisory review report. That is not correct.
Okay, that is, my confusion, I thought it wasn't binding anyway, it was advisory.
The, the petition are... Three elements to it. Number one, acceptance of the statute. Number two, creation of a special stabilization fund for economic development. And number three, a mandatory direction of all the tax money to that stabilization fund. One and two were fine, number three was legally defected to the nonprofit. Which brings me back to my point, that if only anything is done tonight is accept the statute, and if you want to create a fund, without any doubt tonight, if you vote money in that, that...
Speaker, this is, yeah, I have a question for clarification, and maybe the conference could speak to this. By law, the 14th is passed, that money is a local receipt, it goes on page three of the recast sheet. Can, can that be, can that be verified, Senator? Can that be, can that be verified here tonight?
The town administrator is nodding her head in affirmation.
Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Peter Franns, 62, Rio, who filled the role of, put the question. The question is not to debate, it requires two-thirds vote. All votes are okay, but we will question in time to the issue of whether we accept Chapter 64L, Section 2A, 65, N9.
Aye.
All votes opposed. No, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. All right, we now move to the question and I just want to-
Wait for it. Mr. Monger, report for order. Please take your water. We're approaching the 11 o'clock voting now. And 11 o'clock, whatever we're talking about becomes the last issue for the meeting. That would suggest that we learn a lot of language, we're all tired and we all know we have to come back tomorrow evening. So it's a matter of urgency to terminate the meeting at the conclusion of your remarks prior to the 11 o'clock. And let's go back tomorrow.
All right, well, that's, we'll get to that. Okay, the, the question is to move, here's the motion as to be voted on. I move that the town accepts a provision of NASA General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, authorizing a local meals tax and further the board's selection to endeavor to allocate these funds to include but not be limited to capital and economic development costs as needed necessary or as best used to set the funds. Okay, that's the motion before you.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, point of order. So your point of order, what you just read is Article 14. Is that correct, Rebecca? So just so everyone understands, you're voting on Article 14, there's still, should be, there will be an opportunity to vote on Article 27, which directs the font, I don't want there to be confusion about what the motion is. That's correct. My preference would be to vote on Article 27 first, but that's what's in front of you is the longer one is Article 14.
All right, so come to vote. All votes in favor of the motion presented, sit aside by saying aye.
Aye.
All votes opposed.
Aye.
The chair is for the House, please take your positions. All right, we're ready to vote. Thank you. All votes in favor of the motion, please hold up your plate until they can-
Three-three.
Three-three. Right center floor.
Two-three.
Two-three. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee. Sixteen. One-six. Left rear bleater.
What do you want? Two-one.
Two-one. Left front bleater.
Five.
Five. Left rear floor.
Three. Two-three.
Two-three. Left center floor.
Twenty-seven. Two-seven.
Two-seven. Left front door, including moderator and selectmen.
One-seven.
One-seven. All votes opposed, please hold up your vote first. Two-eight. Right rear floor.
One-six.
One-six. Right center floor.
One-one.
One-one. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee.
One-one.
One-one. Left rear bleater.
Fifteen. One-five.
One-five. Left front bleater.
Five.
Left rear floor.
Fifteen. One-five.
One-five. Left center floor.
Fifteen. One-five.
One-five. Left front door, including moderator and selectmen.
Two.
By a vote of 228 in favor and 133 against, the town is going to accept the statute. Now, the next question is, do you want to continue discussing whether to adopt an Economic I can't get anything out of all that. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask someone, and I'm not encouraging you to yes vote on this, I just want to ask you what you want to do. I'm going to ask someone to make a motion for adjournment. If you want to continue to debate this question, and believe me, I'd be happy to see you debate the question, vote no on the motion for adjournment. If you want to pick up and argue or discuss the matter, then vote yes on the motion for adjournment. So, will someone offer that?
Vote no on adjournment.
Mr. Thompson has moved to adjournance a second. All votes in favor of adjournance until tomorrow night, this location, at 7:00, say aye.
Aye.
All votes opposed.
No.
I'm not going to comment on that. All right. Everybody, everybody is taking a big breath there, a letter of recommendation, I don't want you to do a play. Hey, if you want to vote with your feet, that's fine. All votes in favor of adjournance, 7:00, say aye.
Aye.
All votes opposed, say no.
No.
You know, I think the motion to adjourn carried by a small group. So, unless that people want to comment, I'm going to clarify this vote, this company, oh gee, really. Who's, who's their leader?